Okay, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting of January 25th at 2021 at 6:00 PM. Please ask if anybody is recording and announce that the cable company is taping, if present, and they are. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 emergency outbreak, the January 25th public hearing of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to avoid this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date at Okay, first of all. Okay, first of all, introduce the Board of Selectmen. My name is Rich LaCameron, the Chairman of the Board. And we have Selectman Fabian here, please.
Present.
And we have Selectman Day.
Present.
Thank you. Okay. So just a couple announcements. The Town Clerk, as a reminder, to the annual election is April 5th, 2021. Nomination papers are available at the Town Clerk's office. Please call ahead at (508) 946-8800 to make an appointment to request the nomination papers. For additional information on the process and the positions are available, visit the Town Clerk's page on the town's website. The Treasurer and Collector's Office would like to remind residents that real estate taxes are due on February 1st, 2021. As the Town Hall is closed to the public due to COVID-19, no person payments will be allowed and cash is not accepted at this time. You have options to make your payments for real estate and motor vehicle excise tax. Payments by check or money order can be mailed or dropped in the silver payment box located outside of the Town Hall. Or you can pay online through the town's website. Current excise tax or current past due real estate taxes and personal property taxes. Okay. I'd just like to make another brief announcement. As you know, there's been a lot of discussions about vaccine and locations and clinics and and so forth. And for those who know, the Governor announced today that the Phase 2 vaccinations will start on February 1st, which is the 75 and older people. It should be noted that it's not going to actually be February 1st. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be done in the meantime. And including applying for an application and so forth and so on, and making sure that the the clinics are available and that vaccine is available, which is most important. So just so everybody knows that the town had been planning a clinic weeks ago, Lakeville Clinic, and now that it's pretty much out there, a number of people talking about it, I think it's important that we tell people that we are planning our clinic. We have not been approved by the state yet. That's in the process. And for all that to happen is probably going to take a couple of weeks. So there's nothing definite, you know, at this point, but I just want you to be aware because I know we're getting lots of calls about what we're doing, when it's going to happen and so forth. So I just want to, you know, make sure that that's clarified. Brian or Leah, do you want to say anything about that?
I'm all set.
I would just say huge thanks to not only the Fire Department, but also the Board of Health for all their work going into this. There's a lot of background efforts that have to, you know, even get us set up to be able to apply for this kind of thing. So thank you very much for all of your efforts and I'm sure if approval, a very successful turnout.
I'm sure we will. Okay. Back in, I think it was December that we met with the Finance Committee and one of the requests actually from both Brian and the Finance Committee was to have the Town Accountant, I'm sorry, Todd, I'm going to introduce the Town Accountant, Todd Hassett. I forgot about that. And then I need to have George call the Finance Committee to order, please.
Sorry. So it is 6:06, Finance Committee, call to order. I'm just going to do a quick roll call. Darren?
Darren Beals, present.
Adam? Thought I saw Adam. You there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you. Larry?
Larry Costin, here.
I think Jennifer, I didn't see her. Is she here? No, okay. So just four of us.
Anyways, so what the Town Accountant was asked to do was that on a quarterly basis, you know, we would meet with the Board of Selectmen and we would meet with the Finance Committee. And he's provided some summary sheets, you know, as to, you know, where we are, you know, as far as budget is concerned and actual concerning both revenues and expenditures. So Todd, you want to take this over then, please?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. You should have a three-page summary handout. Each page representing one of our appropriation funds. As you know, our primary operating fund is the general fund, and that's what we'll speak to first, followed by a brief discussion about our two enterprise or business-type funds for the Park Department and the Transfer Station. So in speaking with Selectman Day, we thought this might be a good idea to on a quarterly basis, update the community on how the budget is progressing. We spend so much effort developing the budget and getting to Town Meeting and getting it approved and and after that, there's not much updating to the community. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to let you know how Lakeville's doing through the first half of the year. This is the second quarter report through December 31st. Our fiscal year, as you know, is July 1 to June 30. And so I thought I would just highlight for the group some of the things that are going well and some of the areas that we have concern about or that we're watching as we go through the second half of the fiscal year. And then I think our plan is to get together again in about a month and then begin as a group discussing the preliminary forecast for the FY '22 or next year's budget. So tonight, we're really just going to focus on current year performance and how things are looking. So the town's general fund budget is 30, just under $31 million for all of the various services the public enjoys. And about 83% of our revenue is derived from property taxes, from real and personal property taxes. And the, as you know, the third quarter bills are due February 1st, as Rich mentioned. And that's when the actual assessments for the year sort of true up the tax bills. So very often, the third and fourth quarter tax revenues are a bit higher than the first two quarters because they're estimated bills. So to date, we're tracking at just about 51% of estimated revenue, our collections. That we have an interim Treasurer Collector, who you've probably met, who is taking a good aggressive approach to sort of getting caught up on a lot of our delinquent accounts and progressing with tax liens and foreclosures. So we're seeing some positive results in terms of collection of delinquent receivables. About 5% of the town's budget is supported through state aid. And this comes to the community in, for the most part, in monthly payments. We do have one exception here in Lakeville. You'll notice our revenue is at 36% through 50% of the year. And we do have a large line item, about $350,000 or so, for smart growth reimbursement from the Commonwealth. And unlike the other state aid components, this item is not paid out monthly. It's, there's a calculation done for all participating communities. And it comes from a fixed state budget and is distributed late in the fiscal year. So the fact that we're tracking at under 50% at this point in the year is, should be of no concern. You may recall that a year ago, just less than a year ago, this particular state aid line item came in under budget by about $100,000 and we made adjustments as we went through the budget process, knowing that. So we've been conservative, we believe, this year in our estimates. And again, we'll keep the committees informed once we know what the actual revenue might be for that item. The next several revenue line items represent what we refer to as local receipts. I apologize. And that represents about 12% of the funding for our general fund operating budget. And this, as many of you know, the large share of it relates to motor vehicle excise tax, ambulance receipts, inspectional permits, investment earnings, and other local fees and permits. So to date, again, not all of these are, some of these revenues are somewhat seasonal. Motor excise, for example, we've just sent out the first commitment for, which is the large billing for motor excise. So it's more on a calendar year basis. So the, you see, we're only at about 18%. So this particular line is more critical to look at at the end of the third quarter to see how we're doing. Because, as I say, the major billing just went out and is due in 30 days. I can tell you that the billing as compared to the first billing a year ago is down about $40,000. But we did use a conservative budget estimate, so we're still fairly confident we'll hit to or beat the number you have on this exhibit. But it's an indicator based on the times and something we'll be careful about as we budget forward for FY '22. Similarly, a lot of the building-related inspectional permit revenues are a little under at this point in the year, but again, we typically see a lot more activity, as you can imagine, in the spring when the building season really gets ramped up again. We have a modest amount of, in lieu of tax receipts, they get billed the second half of the fiscal year. So those haven't even been billed yet. And those are paid by the cities of New Bedford and Taunton. Investment earnings are off. This is not a major line in our revenue budget, but the performance is off due to the fact that rates have really come down. The flip side of which is it's a great time for communities to borrow, which we may talk about at some point. And so we do not anticipate the earnings to meet budget this year, investment earnings. And then the other revenue we collect really relates to fines, miscellaneous insurance reimbursements, sale of surplus public property, which we try to do once or twice a year. And at this point in the year, we're running just under 49% actual to budget on the revenue side. The expense side of the general fund budget in the major functional areas, I'll just touch on quickly. We don't have any major concerns at this point, which is great. There are a handful of departments that we're keeping an eye on or that we have some concern that might need supplemental funding or a reserve fund transfer or some other transfer to get through the balance of the year. Nothing at this time, but likely at the end of the third quarter, we'll have some more definitive thoughts about that. With respect to general government, I mentioned we have an interim treasurer. So we did have our longtime treasurer retired. We're running a little tight with the transition with that budget so that we might need some modest supplemental funding for Treasury. Similarly, we lost our Technology Director. And we've replaced his, he was an employee of the town. His services currently are being, have been replaced by a firm that's providing outsourced contract services to support the town's technology. Again, this this area of the budget looks like it might be a little short later in the year and require some level of transfer. Lastly, in the general government section, the Cable Advisory Cable TV Advisory Committee has a very modest budget for legal services related to their efforts on behalf of the townspeople. And their legal costs have actually exceeded their modest $3,000 budget. We will be seeking some supplemental funding for that, a very modest. In terms of public safety, this includes police, fire, communications, inspectional services, and animal control. All of the areas to date are doing well, but as you can imagine, when it comes to public safety, things can change. We're early in the winter. There could be any number of unforeseen things, but to date, things are tracking well. Should the inspection activity in the building department ramp up in the spring, as we expect it will, some of the part-time inspector salaries who are basically paid on a per inspection basis will likely need some supplementing, much like we had to do last year. So that's good on the one hand, that there's a lot of activity. And certainly, if we need to supplement these budgets, we will have revenue coming in from permit fees to somewhat offset it. And also, it's an indicator for future new growth for new property tax in future years. The education section of the budget is fairly fixed. We typically expend very close to 100%. As you know, most of this is paid in the form of assessments to the regional school, Freetown Lakeville, and also to the regional vocational school, Old Colony. We also have 12 or 13 Lakeville students that attend Bristol County Agricultural School. And we pay a tuition fee per student. Plus, typically, in a normal year, not this year, but in a normal year, we also pay for transportation of those students. We have recently received notice that they have a major facility improvement project underway with state assistance in that the member communities that send students to the Aggie School will likely be seeing an additional assessment starting next year to cover some of the local costs related to the debt service for these new facilities. The project in total is over $100 million with over 50% of state contribution from the State Building Authority. Public Works. Fortunately, we had a fairly mild winter last year, as you know. Thus far, this year has been going well. But that, as you know, can change over the next few weeks. So again, at the end of the third quarter, this is really when we see whether we're faced with any sort of deficit related to snow and ice removal. But to date, there's still a modest budget balance. We don't budget a lot for this area. And it is one of the few areas that cities and towns are allowed to deficit spend. But of course, we've got to cover the deficit. Either before the year ends or it is added to the taxes the following year. So Public Works, at this point, always looking good. Human Services, this would include the Board of Health, the Council on Aging, and Veterans Services. We're tracking well, in all cases, with the exception of our part-time public health nurse who we've had to engage because of the COVID-19 pandemic in a much more aggressive way. And we only had a modest budget for these sort of visiting nurse services. We did secure some grant funds for some of this through the Mass Association of Health Boards. And other than that, the human service area is tracking well this year. Culture and Recreation includes primarily, in our case, the public library. Most of our recreation, we'll talk about as it relates to the Park Enterprise Fund, so it's not contained in the general fund. And the library is, as every year, they're managing their budget quite well. They do have some modest state funds to supplement their program and trust funds and their trustees and the director are very careful about how they expend public money. So I don't foresee any problem in this area. State and County Assessments, these are for things like mosquito control, Transit Authority, MBTA. They're set by the state. When we set our tax rate, as you may recall, the state did not have its budget in order finalized. So our state assessment estimate is not necessarily what the final, actual assessments will be. But as you can see, we're tracking just over 50%. So we're tracking very closely to budget in that area. Employee Benefits and Insurance. This would be for all of the employees in these various functional areas. It includes pensions, group health insurance, and other benefits, workers' compensation. We also the town's property and liability insurance is in this area, which we did need the Fall Town Meeting to supplement. So as you can see, we're tracking at 71%, which initially looks like we're in trouble or this is an area of concern. But again, like we talked about on the revenue side, with respect to benefits, our pension assessment, which is administered by Plymouth County, that is paid out July 1st at the beginning of the year in full. And that assessment is about $1.2 million. So we look like we're in trouble, but we're actually tracking okay. It's a little tighter than it was a year ago, as you can see. And the other thing that's unique to us this year, which we asked Town Meeting for some supplemental funds in the fall, is that we've had some unemployment claims, again, due to the pandemic, that typically we don't experience. Cities and towns in Massachusetts do not pay a percentage of payroll for unemployment. We only pay based on actual claims. So most years, our unemployment budget is very low. This year, we've had some claims to deal with. And we expect that will moderate as we go forward after this year. The debt service budget, again, this is based on when certain principal and interest payments are due. Most of our long-term municipal bonds are paid in semi, they're paid semi-annually with one annual interest payment. So it's a little different than a loan or a mortgage payment that an individual might have. And this year, you'll we've got the full impact of the police station, which was excluded by the voters. And we're getting close to paying down several smaller projects and capital items. So this is an area sort of the fact that we're rolling off and maturing some debt and the fact that interest rates are so favorable for cities and towns right now. This is an area that the Board will be looking at as we start to look at the capital plan next month. So in addition to revenues and expenditures, you'll notice on the handout that I prepared for you toward the bottom, there are other financing sources and other funds to sort of balance the budget that we use. And so the sources and uses are tipped outside of the general fund are funds that come into the general fund to support a budget item or items that Town Meeting votes to use general fund money for other purposes. So in our case, for the year we're looking at, we have very modest amounts coming in, just over $20,000. And this relates specifically to the septic loan program for homeowners. We carry the septic debt in the debt service budget in the general fund. And we maintain a kind of a revolving loan program for homeowners in a separate fund. And then as the debt comes due, we ask Town Meeting to transfer from those receipts to cover that year's debt payments. This line will be going up as we go forward. You may recall the Town Meeting a couple of years ago approved about $1 million, I think it was, of new borrowing for homeowner loans. But again, there should be no taxpayer impact on paying these loans back. It's just simply a mechanism to assist homeowners with major septic repairs. Our transfers out vary based on, you know, what we might have for excess free cash or certain circumstances in a particular year. And what you see here is just over $1,67,000 that always voted through Town Meeting articles to be transferred out of the general fund for various purposes. The lion's share of this, $868,000, was to support the town's capital plan. We also, in the fall, had to supplement the Park Enterprise by $50,000 because their revenue is not, their revenue situation this year due to the pandemic is fairly critical. So we did provide a subsidy in the fall. And as the Finance Committee may recall, we discussed that there may be the need by the end of the year to look at additional supplementing to get them through. Again, it's a little early yet, but it's a tough year for the park, for sure. We also annually subsidize a portion of the Transfer Station Solid Waste Program. It's typically about $100,000 a year that the general fund votes to transfer to supplement, to use in conjunction with their program revenue to support their operation. And lastly, this year, we also in the fall, Town Meeting approved transferring $50,000 from free cash to the Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, which is for post-employment, mostly healthcare costs, future healthcare costs for town employees and retirees. And so the budget as voted by Town Meeting, including the capital transfers, resulted in $1.2 million of shortfall or expenditures and transfers out exceeding revenues and transfers in. And Town Meeting balanced the town's budget by utilizing $1,096,000 of free cash. And Town Meeting um balanced the town's budget by utilizing a million ninety-six thousand of free cash and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of prior year overlay surplus released by the Board of Assessors. The, again, most of the free cash um was allocated to our capital plan, just over three quarters of a million dollars. And um about two hundred and ninety-four thousand went toward operating costs. Um, and certainly not a practice we want to be advocating because as you know, free cash can vary. It can be high some years, low other years. And we don't want to become, have recurring costs dependent on one-time sources. This is also, as I mentioned, how we um subsidized the park program this year. And um, and funding for the OPEB Post-Employment uh Benefits Trust. The overlay surplus funds were appropriated by Town Meeting for the capital plan. So again, those are, those are somewhat one-time, they don't happen every year, um opportunities um to uh put towards some one-time capital expense. Now, turning to the enterprise funds, and I'll be very brief. There's not a whole lot to talk about right now. As I mentioned, the Park Enterprise, um they're on a very um reduced um program level at this point, as, as you know. Uh, so much of their typical revenue is not coming in. Um, they are at seventeen percent of budget, whereas a year ago at this time, they were at sixty-two percent of budget. Again, thinking about many of their programs are seasonal, that there's a, a big influx through the first quarter of the year due to the summer programs that they were not able to enjoy this year. Um, we did um moderate their, their budget, as you know. And they've been um spending uh very prudently at a modest level. Um, they're only at twenty-four percent of budget through uh halfway through the year. And, and as you'll note, there's a fifty thousand dollar transfer in from the general fund to help balance their budget. They also had to, to access their retained earnings or, or the funds, free cash, if you will, um by nearly sixty-two thousand dollars to, to completely balance the budget. Uh fifteen thousand of that was for a specific capital item for irrigation, I believe. And forty-seven thousand uh was allocated toward their operating budget. Again, not a good practice uh as their retained earnings is fairly depleted. Uh, so it won't be there year after year necessarily to um cover recurring operating costs. So there's, I know there's a, the, the Board of Selectmen have been working uh with the Park Commission on, on some of these issues. Um, it, it may be that we're at a point where we, we may want to discuss another evening. The viability of this as, as an ongoing enterprise or, or whether the program should be folded back into the general fund along with the other departmental budgets. The last page um in your handout um summarizes the uh solid waste transfer station enterprise. Which I'm pleased to report is, is doing fairly well. Uh, you'll see their revenues are tracking quite well to date. Um, over seventy-one percent. Now, there was some, I may remind you, there was some pent-up demand or uh coming out of the, the early part of um the shutdown due, due to uh COVID-19. So some of that, you know, spilled into the summer and sort of gave them a real jump start on the revenue side. Their operations are tracking well to date. Uh, the expenses do lag um due to the, the billing by the haulers. Um, so this is typically at least one month behind on the expense side for reporting, sometimes more than that. The uh Public Works Director does have some concerns going forward, um which we'll talk about more when we get into the FY twenty-two budget uh regarding commercial um use of the transfer station and some of the fee structures. And I'm sure he'll be uh coming to the board to discuss that in, in more detail. Uh, and we do anticipate that hauling costs will be increasing uh next year. The, you'll notice um to balance the budget, um a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars at the bottom was uh utilized by Town Meeting from their retained earnings. Um, so this, at, at face value, looks to be of concern. Um, but I, I can tell you that, and you may recall, a hundred and sixty-two thousand of this related to the purchase of, the one-time purchase of a, a new loader. Um, which broke down this fall and um and uh has aged out and, and needed to be replaced. And there were just over two thousand dollars um approved for prior year uh bills associated with the program. In addition um to the appropriation funds, as I said, this has been an unusual year for most of us. We've had a lot of activity related to uh COVID-19 um in the public safety offices and, and actually every department's been impacted by it. Uh, and in a dramatic way, the public schools have been as well. Um, so we've been participating uh through the Plymouth County Cares Program. And um this um program has allocated funds to every member community. It's all federally funded. Um, we've to date uh been approved for reimbursement of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of expenses uh related to COVID-19. Just over three hundred thousand of that are to support uh Freetown-Lakeville Regional Schools and Old Colony Voc Tech. Um, we do have a number of um additional submissions uh that will be um sending in soon from Freetown-Lakeville uh to cover uh much of their PPE costs. Uh, a lot of their technology expenses to do with remote learning. Um, and so um, and this has also supported Lakeville um having two temporary additional firefighters to, to support uh the operate, the fire op, and EMS operation. So um it's been certainly a challenge for all of us. Um, these supplemental federal funds have certainly helped um mitigate a lot of the one-time expense many departments have incurred um to be in compliance and, and to be uh mindful of public health. And with that, um, I'll open it up to any questions or comments you might have.
Todd, it's Brian. I just want to say thank you very much for putting that together. You know, a clean, concise way and explaining to all of us and everybody at home at why it is expected or unexpected for some of these accounts to be, you know, at fifty percent or higher or lower at this time of the year. It is a lot of intricacies in there I certainly don't understand. So thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
Would, would you mind? I know you've explained in another one of our meetings, but for everybody at home that maybe didn't catch that one, would you mind just kind of quickly um defining what free cash is to them? Because the name is um, you know, inter, not so free, but.
Right, yeah, we, we like to say it's not free and it's not cash. Um, but essentially what it is, if you think about it in terms of maybe a business environment, it's um unencumbered, un, um, it's equity that's not tied up or, or um it's, it's um the result of revenues exceeding budgeted revenues, actual revenues exceeding. Um, it's the result of a departmental budgets not being fully expended. Uh, so anything that's sort of um is able to close back to the general fund equity um is that, and then there's this convoluted um process and formula that the Department of Revenue uh approach they use, um very conservative where uh they'll take our available equity and they'll back off certain things like uncollected property taxes and uh possibly deficits that we might have um due to a timing or, or um some problem the community may have experienced. And it, it fluctuates because, as you can imagine, certain years, the budget performance is better than others. And um, and certainly when times are tough, um, sometimes our tax receivables increase people. It's tougher for people to make the payments and we have more delinquents. And so more is held back um by the state when they, they actually certify the free cash available for each community to um expend through Town Meeting. Uh, it's not something the selectmen can, can decide to spend on, on a Monday night. And sometime we can walk through um a calculation of Lakeville's if you'd like, just to see what all the components are.
I appreciate you laying that out for us again. Um, I mean, it, from my point of view, I'm certainly interested in what um, you know, my colleagues in FinCon have to say, but it looks like given all of the unknown so far, where we're at in this year, we're in relatively good standing. I mean, do you, as an accountant, feel like we're in a good space?
I do, I do. I mean, and with, with some of the other communities I'm working with, it's, it's more challenging than this. And, and as I say, the uh, the federal cares funds and in some communities FEMA reimbursements have, have really saved the day. Um, but it's really tough, as you can imagine, for some of the urban areas, for the cities, because they're much more dependent on state aid, uh which has been level funded or in some cases reduced. Um, and so they're also um impacted by the closure of, of restaurants and hotels and motels in those areas that have a lot of meals, tax revenue or room tax revenue, which, so we, we, we're a little, we don't have that as much. So in some respects, we're a bit insulated, uh if you will. Um, and, and the departments have done a really good job managing their budgets to date. We'll hope for not a lot of snow.
One thing we can all agree on.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, Todd. I'll yield to the floor.
My pleasure.
Answering the question.
Anybody else got any questions, Finance Committee?
Yeah, Todd, this is Darren. I, I think this is really helpful. I, thanks for putting it together. My one question for you is where is the reimbursement, the FEMA reimbursement in this budget to actual, where is it located?
It's um not located in here at all. So it's a great question. I, and I should have made that clear. Um, the guidance we've been given is to essentially deficit spend in what the state would tell you is a grant fund. So uh what we talked about tonight were our operating funds, um our appropriation funds, I should say. So um what's, what we're doing is we've got funds um separate from these three where we're running related expenses through and then submitting a package for reimbursement. In the event that something is denied, and, and we did have a couple of small things, for example, to do with early voting, where the county said, well, that's not COVID, in their view, it wasn't COVID-related. So in those cases, those expenses then got reclassified back to the elections budget or, or the town clerk budget. So um, so you don't see that here, but I thought it was important to let you know it's, it's a substantial amount of money that's, that's assisting the town through this pandemic.
Okay, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Um, so the Finance Committee knows uh in the Board of Selectmen that over the next couple of weeks, I mean, Todd, we're putting together the budgets and our budget packages for us. And uh probably sometime the end of February, early March, we'll be starting to review the budget. So uh, that's the plan. Okay, so thank you, Todd. We appreciate that update.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda and with uh they've been waiting for us is uh Senator Rodjix and Representative Oral, and uh I believe you're both here.
Yes.
Um, I'm sure that um Senator Rodjix is quite familiar with all those terms we just talked about because he was on the Finance Committee in uh Westport. So he knows exactly what we're talking about. So uh, welcome and um thanks for coming. Um, first of all, you know, uh as Todd just went through the financials, you know, uh, one of the key components of that was the uh state aid and uh we're very thankful that um you guys were able to support that for us and, and early on. So we knew uh what we needed to do. And I know that there was one item we didn't get what we expected, but overall, it came out pretty good. So uh, we really appreciate, you know, all your support, you know, on that. Senator Rodjix, are you there or?
I am, I am. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Uh, hello, everyone. And let me stop by saying that was an excellent presentation by Todd. Uh, I did cut my teeth in public service, oh God, over thirty years ago, nineteen eighty-six, as a, a member of the, my community's Westport's uh uh Finance Committee. So those, that terminology is, and, and everything he talked about is very, very familiar with me. And now as uh, as Chair of the uh Senate Committee on Ways and Means, where my office is responsible for writing the state's budget. Um, we operate almost very, very similarly to how local finance committees operate. Uh, just a lot more zeros, that's all. So just add a bunch of zeros and um, and it's pretty much the same. Um, the um, you know, the pandemic certainly uh caused um uh a lot of extra work for us uh writing the state's budget. We did settle early on in the year, um at the beginning of the fiscal year in July, uh our local aid numbers to allow our municipalities and our communities to, to move ahead in fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, we committed to a, uh to level funding, uh UGA, unrestricted general government aid and to level fund plus inflation, uh the Chapter Seventy uh line items, which are the two largest line items. Um, um, that municipalities and local communities rely on uh for local aid. Um, and we actually were able to sneak in a little increase in the pilot, Payment-Lure Taxes line item, which for those communities that have lots of state-owned land within their borders, it's, it means a lot uh to them. Um, we are, you know, we, we barely got a couple of nights sleep when we put together the, put to bed the fiscal year twenty-one budget and we jumped into the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Uh, we are forecasting for fiscal year twenty-two about a three point five percent revenue increase for FY twenty-two. That will be reflected in unrestricted government aid, local aid to local communities because we um, we um allocate increases to our local communities based upon what the total increase is. Um, and by the way, uh, last year, we had a twelve percent reduction in revenue. We did not reduce local aid by twelve percent. So you know, you, you get to have your cake and eat it too. You know, we, we give you the increases, but when, when uh revenues decrease, we don't, we do not, or we have not uh reduced um our, our, our local aid uh payments. Um, the governor's will be filing his budget this coming Wednesday and in a couple of days. It'll go over to the House for Representative Oral and his colleagues to do their magic to it. And then it will come over to uh, to us in the Senate. We are keeping our fingers crossed and hoping this year we can get back into a normal budget cycle, meaning the House of Representatives uh passes their version of the budget in April. Um, we in the Senate pass our version of the budget in May. Uh, we used the month of June for Conference Committee and to reconcile the differences between both budgets. And we get a budget on the governor's desk by July one, uh although sometimes it does drag on a couple of weeks uh beyond uh until uh into the fiscal year. Um, so besides the operating budget, um, at the end of the session, we did pass and, and the governor signed into law two major bond bills of which, uh, there's some good news in those bond bills for the town of uh, of Lakeville. And I'm just gonna, let me just pull it up so I don't, I don't make a mistake here. Um, but uh, in the uh transportation bond bill, uh, there was two point five million dollars allocated in that for improvements to Route One-O-Five and Bridge Street. Um, that was um articulated to uh to us as the priority of the town for capital transportation improvements. So that money has been uh allocated, the governor signed it. So we should meet with your local uh highway um uh board soon to begin uh planning on how to ensure that that money gets included as part of the capital improvement plan, the so-called SIP uh from the state. Because just because it's allocated, doesn't mean it's going to get appropriated. You're going to get the money. You know, you're, you're going to need to. You know, you're going to need to provide mass DOT with a real plan of how exactly what you're going to do for low lay improvements. But that's something that we can work with you on. And then in the Economic Development Bond Bill, there was $100,000 allocated and signed by the governor for municipal broadband, IT and infrastructure improvements throughout the town. So, you know, that's that's a little easier to access, but once again, we'll have to develop a plan and to see how we access that. And finally, in addition to that, town meeting, Lakeville Town Meeting did send to the Legislature a home rule petition establishing or allowing the the town through the Board of Selectmen to appoint its treasurer collector. That was passed and that was signed by the governor. And I know, Richard, you've been keeping in close touch with Caitlin Rowley, who's on the call. Caitlin is my is my district director, also a Lakeville resident. So when I go to the State House every day, she's keeping me out of trouble in the district and she does a great job. But I thought it was important, I, this time of year, I think it's important that I do meet with my local officials, my boards of selectmen, to see what is on their mind as we're beginning this session, what what we can put on our radar screen to look out for and advocate for. And, you know, so thank you for inviting me on and I'll turn it over to to my good friend and partner on the House side, who does an amazing job representing the town of Lakeville in the House of Representatives, Norman Oral.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, pleasure to be here. It is a perfect time of year to check in and get anything, concerns from you guys as to what the town needs, not only budget-wise, but anything legislatively, anything you see coming that's important for us to know as we start off this new session. It was great to be on the Transportation Bond Conference with the senators to make sure we could get those monies in there. In addition, there is a small allocation in the transportation bond for several towns in the area, including Lakeville, for quiet zones at railroad crossings in the new South Coast Rail installation. So I've been contacted, we've been contacted many times by some of the residents near the crossings. So there is some money in there and it's the same routine to really touch base with MBTA and Jean Fox and the project as it moves forward to see if the state can access those allocated or appropriated monies to add that extra upgrade to those crossings. Because once again, you know, their plans are probably further along and don't include those where we didn't get the bill passed until the last day. So they had to move on without any of those quiet zones. So it's a matter of getting together with them to see if it's something they can add in or at some point add in, but I just add that in. That was also in the Transportation Bond Bill for three Lakeville crossings, as well as Middleborough and Tonton and Berkeley as well for the area. And it was an interesting finish to the session and we were getting that treasurer bill done, I think. Senator, we were texting back and forth, trying to get through the House and back to the Senate and back and forth into the wee hours of of January 6. So we got it done and
About 4:00 AM, I think we got it done.
I think so.
Yeah.
I wasn't to close track in time, but I think you're right. But mostly, as the Senator said, you know, anything we can learn from you folks as to what your needs are and how we can help, it's a great time of year to check in and hear that. So I'm all ears.
Oh, the, thank you for everything you guys have done for us. The most important thing right now is having to do with the the traffic light at 105 and Bridge Street. So we get a handle on that. We're in the process of, as you know, the Lakeville redevelopment, development, the redevelopment of the Lakeville Hospital, and that's that's important. So I guess what we need, we know that all the studies and everything that already been done and mass DOT, you know, was aware of it and they're doing that part of the MIPA review and so forth and so on. So we just got to figure out what the next step is to get that thing moving in the right direction because as Senator Rodjix points out, that, you know, we got to get it included and I believe it's called a five-year capital plan, Senator, if I'm not mistaken.
It is.
So, I mean, so we'd like to get on that list and so we need your help to try to get there. That would be much appreciated.
The town work with Serpette on that?
We do.
Yeah, because Serpette is involved. Serpette knows how to do, they, that's what they do and they know how to do it, you know.
So we'll start that process and get that process moving. We really appreciate it. One of the things is both of you guys are both involved in transportation. I had the opportunity and I actually, Rep Oral set it up for us, was to have a road safety audit done at the intersection of Route 18 and 105, where there's been a number of accidents over the last, you know, few years. And I got to tell you, I attended that process and it was about three hours. But it was fantastic. The state did a great job and the report, the report is now available. The final report's going to be coming out this week. But as you know, there's some short term and there's some long-term things that need to be done. And this, of course, is a state road. And, you know, some of the recommendations that they're going to do in the short term are not a lot of money, but the big cost is really replacing, you know, the traffic light and trying to reconfigure that intersection. So any help you guys can give us in that area would be much appreciated. So if you want, I will forward you this report when it's done. So you can take a look at it. I have one of your aids. Look at it, please.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And remember, when it comes to, there's a saying that dollars follow data. So it's very important, it's very, very important that, and I'm not, I'm sure it's happening, but whatever, whenever there's any sort of incidence at that intersection, that the data, that report gets filed with Mass Highway. Because there's an ongoing list statewide of the 200 most dangerous intersections. Those are the ones that are at the top of the priority and it's it's all about data. So.
Yeah, fair question. We'll do that. Okay, I mean, you already talked about the, you touched on the the state budget, which is good. The only thing that I'm concerned about is the, I know the governor is saying he's going to fully fund the student opportunity funding for the first year, which is primarily Chapter 70. You know, and the concern about that is that based upon the numbers that were initially the last year, we did not get a significant increase. You know, we only got a small percentage, small amount per student. And I think that, you know, that is a problem when you have a regional school district that could have $40 million budget and you got Old Colony that's got a $7 million budget. And to give, you know, $30 a student or whatever is an issue. So hopefully, as you guys go through that budget process, you look at that. I know you have in the past. And I know you can't give us an answer right now, but I think that that's a concern.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, my other board members, do you have anything you want to bring up with the Rep and Senator?
Just continued support, which I know is in the works for the APC project stuff. Moving right along, but any extra support we can get there is good.
Excuse me, that's another thank you, guys. I mean, that was huge to us. And, you know, I know things are moving forward. Go ahead, Brian.
Well, I haven't, excuse me, I haven't heard good or bad about the APC in a while, so I I'm assuming it's good news because usually you hear bad news. So at least Caitlin keeping me apprised that things seem to be moving well throughout that. So if anything is coming down the pike, remember, it's easier to influence a decision than to change one. So if something, if you see that somewhere down the road, a decision point is coming up on something and you have a strong opinion on it, please weigh in to Rep Oral and I as soon as possible. Okay.
Okay, no, that's good. I have Caitlin's number.
Yeah, she's great.
Yep, she is.
Brian?
Thank you. I would just like to say, you know, thank you for your continued support. Your offices are always very responsive when we reach out and get us data and answers very, very quick. That's very much appreciated. It was great to see these bonds passed and signed by the governor. I was reading the veto list, the pocket veto is like, did we make it? Did we make it? All right, we did. So that was excellent news. Keep it short. I've got one item I might reach out to the offices on where in recent, or within the past few months, we had an issue with one of the telecom providers in town. And it kind of came down to a, well, the law says we don't have to warn you about these kinds of things because it's internet, not TV. And it just kind of left a sour taste in my mouth. And I'd like to reach out to you guys and see what the state is with, not the state, but see what the current laws say on when major providers have major outages in towns. You know, what can we do? Is it really just cable TVs out there to notify us? And we had hundreds of homes without internet service for quite a period of time. And we've got lots of people home working and students doing at-home schooling. And it was just a very frustrating couple of days for the town members. And maybe we can have a short dialogue on what potentially could be done in the future.
Sure, yeah. That's become more and more important. You're right. This last year, and I think it's here to stay. So be interested to see what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, absolutely, Brian. Aaron Cotty is our General Counsel in the committee, and I can have Caitlin arrange it. So it's probably easiest for you two to have, just have a phone conversation, just have a conversation and then you can explain to him what happened and what the details are. And he can do some research and get back to you. Happy to do that. Yep.
I'd appreciate that, Rich. Thank you very much.
Okay. Just so you know, Senator and Rep, do you know the last time we met was the last time we had an in-person meeting for our meeting? That was a year ago. So we're still meeting in Zoom. So, oh, God.
Oh, wait, I mean, you know, that's our life.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have anything they want to bring up to the Senator and Rep? Well, we appreciate you coming and I'm sure.
Okay.
And we appreciate it. And thank you once again for your support. And I'm sure we'll have some challenges here as we go forward. So.
Thank you.
Glad to be here. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going back to the the agenda. Item number six, we have a request from the Fire Chief to appoint Cameron Sasperin as Call Fire Fighter. That we have a motion to approve, the Fire Chief is on here. Fred, Mike, did you want to say anything or?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Just Cameron's a local guy. He's a, he's a young kid just out of college. Excuse me, out of high school. He attends Stony Hill College. He's a basic EMT and he's a hard charger. He's been at the station just about every day observing. So I'm happy to have him on board.
Okay, so I understand the motion to appoint him?
I'll make a motion to appoint Cameron Sarkisian as a Call Fire Fighter. Do we have it? No, okay.
He's met all his prerequisites. He's already taken the PAT. He's already passed his his background check. The only thing that he needs really is to is to be appointed by you.
I made that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I believe the chief would like a temporary or probationary period with this appointment.
Chief?
That's correct. Typically, it's one year for all of our employees, including Call Fire Fighters.
Okay, I would assume Leah will amend that motion.
Yep, motion to include a one-year probationary period.
Second the motion with amendment?
All those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
The camera eye. Second thing he's requesting is the authorization to apply for a federal F AFG grant to replace the brush breaker and protective clothing. The estimated request is $600,000 for this grant. The grant match will be 5% or approximately $30,000. Did you want to speak to this, Chief?
Well, it's just a, it's a grant opportunity that comes around every year. And I don't want to, I don't want to see us miss out on a funding opportunity for for much-needed fundamental equipment, public safety equipment. And, you know, this is a, this provides a relief to Lakeville taxpayers and and increase safety for our firefighters. So it's, for me, it's a no-brainer to apply to these, for these grants.
And I must say, Chief, you have been very, very successful in applying for grants and getting grants. We appreciate that. As the board might entertain a motion to allow the chief to apply for this AFG grant.
May I ask one question first, Mr. Chair? I'm just curious, Chief O'Brien, is this a all or nothing opportunity or could they come back and say we award $300,000 of it, $400,000 of it?
Well, it's typically on the vehicle grants, it's all or nothing. On the personal protective clothing, sometimes they partially fund the grant. But in my, in my past successes, they funded the grants completely.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize the chief to apply for the AFG grant to replace the brush truck and protective clothing, which comes with a match of approximately 5% or $30,000.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
The camera eye. His third request is the change of residential smoke and carbon monoxide inspection fees. The current fee is $25 for inspections, $25 for re-inspections. He's recommending establishing a fee of $50 for inspections and $50 for re-inspections. Chapter 148, Section 10A provides the authority to the Board of Selectmen to charge up to $50. Chief, do you want to explain this one, please?
So there's increased expense related to providing these inspections. There's callbacks, things of that nature. And this increase matches or tries to offset that that related cost of providing this service.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to increase those fees?
I'll make a motion that we increase the current charge from 25 to 50 and the reinspection from 25 to $50.
Second the motion with one question?
Sure.
I was just going to ask the chief, this is for residential. Are the, you know, multi-family unit prices where you'd like to see them right now already?
Well, this breaks down to, it's $50 per dwelling. So if you find inspect a apartment building and it's owned by the same person, the price would be $50, $50 per dwelling. So if it was 60, it'd be, it would be six times 50.
Okay, so we don't have to spell that out. That's automatic per the dwelling.
Yep, and that's spelled out in the master general law.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can I ask a question also? Is it your discretion, Chief, if you have a, you know, affordable unit or a low-income unit that you can waive the fee for a family?
If there's an instance, say, a firefighter provides and they fail an inspection, I can, I can waive that fee if there's any kind of a conflict. If I feel that there's like special circumstances, I can waive the fee as well. I have that authority.
Okay, I just want people to know that if, you know, because we're getting more and more affordable units in town. And, you know, that's one place where we don't want anyone to ever have to skimp on their budget. So.
Typically, when, a time too, where I have smoke detectors, battery-operated smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, if I find a house that's really deficient with people living in it, I won't leave unless I've put some detectors up in that, in that house. I won't let them stay another night in that house.
And these fees, Chief, this is just when a real estate transaction is happening, correct? When ownership is changing?
Yeah, that's our only real authority. I'm sorry, my, I'm lagging. That's the only really opportunity for us to get into one or two family homes is during the property transfers. And that's the only time the fire code applies to those buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
The camera eye. Next on the agenda is to review and vote to approve the host community agreement for Twisted Grows. Brian, you want to take this?
Sure. Looks like we've got Attorney Silma with us tonight. So over the past few weeks, we've been having some great conversations with the various businesses we'll speak with about here tonight. We have now come to a conclusion, it looks like, on uh, those contracts. So first, we have the host community agreement for Twisted Growers, um, where, let me pull up. Is Amy with us tonight? Or I don't think she is.
No, she's not. No.
She's not? Okay. So um, if you remember from our last meeting, uh, we did have some minor changes to the contract um, on some verbiage as well as fees on how uh transfers between their cultivation and retail sites would be charged as well as what the minimum payments would be. Uh, we also made sure to go up and kind of firm up what the commencement of operation meant in all these contracts, so that everybody understood when some of the payments would start to become due. Um, it was a, a little unclear, but we think that we've shored those up. Uh, so all the contracts that um Mr. Chair and Selectmen Fabian that you received do have all those changes in them. And I would propose that we do um, entertain a vote to approve them at this time.
Okay, uh, you're gonna, you're making a motion to approve the host community agreement for Twisted Growers, right?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
LaCamera, I. Next on the agenda is to review and vote the host agreement for uh, Boston Botanical.
Same spiel as before, different company. Uh, we make a motion that we approve the host community agreement with Boston Botanical as presented to you. That include the changes discussed last time.
Sorry, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
They are.
LaCamera, I. Uh, Brian, thank you for uh, working and renegotiating those contracts. You know, the, the key things that were in there was the uh, the minimum payment, you know, for the town along with uh, changing the uh, the percentage on how the town gets paid for the revenue. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And uh, I'd like to also thank Twisted Growers, Boston Botanical, and their attorneys as well. They're um, very polite to work with, and I look forward to seeing them be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Tons of work, Brian. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a lot of work. Believe me, I know. Thank you for taking that away from me. Okay, next on the agenda is to review and vote to reauthorize the Southeastern Regional Services Intermunicipal Agreement. Um, I guess the agreement that uh before was uh, needed to be adjusted and corrected. And uh, so um there's a motion there. Uh, if uh, one of the board members can read that motion, we can reauthorize. This has already been previously approved. But we have to vote to reauthorize it for some reason.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that the Lakeville Board of Selectmen vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the Southeastern Regional Services Group, also known as SERC SIG, so as to extend the term of that agreement for a period of 25 years from February 1st, 2021. Subject to any rights of termination or withdrawal with all other terms of the original agreement remaining in place without change and to authorize uh, Chairman Richard LaCamera to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Second the motion?
Any discussion?
Looks like we'll do it again in 2046.
You may still be here.
I certainly won't. All those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
Uh, LaCamera, I. Uh, just so the board knows, uh, all three members of the board have to sign the host agreements, just so you know. So we'll get those ready to do that. Okay, next on the agenda is a request from the planning board to appoint uh, Jack Lynch to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So somebody entertain a mo, I'll entertain a motion to uh, to appoint Jack Lynch as a representative from the board, planning board to the uh, Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Almost.
Uh, second with question for Tracy, I think. Um, is Mr. Lynch replacing anybody or is this an open spot?
Uh, the planning board um, is um, in the charge. They have a member that's appointed, so he's replacing a planning board member that um, left the position.
Okay, so we, we're not, we're not have to remove anybody then? We just add him?
No, they have a dedicated slot and this is filling the vacancy.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
Uh, LaCamera, I. Okay, and that's on the agenda is uh, review to vote the Board of Selectmen's minute, minute meetings of December 9th, 2020 and December 14th, 2020.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve those meeting minutes of December 9th and December 14th.
Second the motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, excuse me.
I was just saying I had no changes.
Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Uh, Fabian, I.
They are.
Uh, LaCamera, I. Okay, all right, where are we here? Okay, um, does any member of the board have anything under new business?
Rich, we have a, we have something for uh, FinCom.
Sure.
We're gonna be uh, reorganizing, so I'll be stepping down as chair. Um, just to make sure that we have uh, somebody in there that, that there's a, enough of a leeway between um, now and the time that I, you know, April, whatever. Um, so I would like to just open it up to the team to see who's uh, interested in being chair of FinCom and then having a discussion and voting on it.
We can't, we can't, you can't vote on it at this meeting, George, because it's not on the agenda? Okay, I'm not on your agenda, I don't think. Tracy wasn't on his agenda, I don't think, right?
No.
Yeah, so you can't, you can't do that. You gotta do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Doesn't mean, you know, if, if you have a co-chair, I mean, you could talk, if you want to talk about who wants to be the chair, that's fine, and then you can plan for that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Um, so I guess we can just have a quick discussion around it. Um, who's, what interest do we have? I just want to make sure that there is an interest in it.
Yeah, this is Darren Beals. I'm interested.
Okay. All right, I think um, Darren's obviously been on um, the longest in terms of um, and he's also on the school committee. Um, I would absolutely um, support that. So uh, I apologize that we can't vote on it. I think that was just a miscommunication, which is um, totally fine. We're gonna meet again and looks like in about a week. I'm sorry, in about a month or so. Um, so we can.
Less than that.
Is it? It's in February, isn't it? Oh, I guess it's.
Yeah, what was the February, George?
Time is flying. It's been a great.
Probably be two or three weeks anyways.
Okay, um, so anyway, I guess we'll, uh, we can revisit then. I apologize again, and thank you, Darren, for um, expressing an interest. Um, and we'll go through a formal process. In the meantime, Darren and I can start having some discussions about kind of processes, but I'm really excited to see the leadership that uh, that he's gonna exhibit going forward and assuming that we go through with this. So thank you again. That's all we have on our end.
Okay, George, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, under um, old business, uh, you know, uh, the fiscal 21, excuse me, uh, fiscal 21 budget actually uh, Todd just spent a lot of time talking about the budget, you know, fiscal 21's budget. Um, and overall, I think we're okay. I mean, we have to make some adjustments, but we think we're okay. Um, as far as fiscal 222 budget, as you know, we're in the process of uh, putting that all together. Um, I think Todd's got uh uh, almost all of the budgets except for one or two. Um, so um, he wants to get those together sometime next week, and then we'll see what happens there. Um, as far as the capital plan is concerned, that um, we um, with the budget submissions, um, the department heads have submitted um, their budgets, um, their capital plans, you know, uh, as far as their budget is concerned. Uh, one of the things that the Board of Selectmen have to do, and uh, I thought we'd get to at this meeting, but um, all of a sudden, the agenda filled up. Um, so at the next meeting, you know, we need to talk about some uh, capital items. We need to talk about some uh, potential uh, building issues and so forth. So at the next meeting, we'll discuss that and uh, try to get that, those capital items together. And then soon after that, you know, uh, we could probably have the preliminary capital plan at the next meeting, and then we need to get the Capital Expenditure Committee involved in that process as well. Okay, um, next is discuss and review the uh, Loon Pond Large Request for Proposals. As you know, um, we originally were looking for a event management um, agreement, you know, to somebody just manage it and then uh, you know, different caterers and so forth, and we decided not to take that approach. And uh, as you know, we put together a an RF, an RFQ, an RFP, actually, it's now an RFP, um, to uh, have one company provide all the services, which includes the event management catering services and the bartending service. And uh, I haven't, um, I got a few comments from the Bar Commission, which I addressed in a separate email and sent it to them. And the proposal is ready to go out. It's been advertised and it'll be released on Thursday, unless the board has any questions or concerns.
Nope, I saw most of their um comments. I thought they were nothing super um, that we didn't already discuss or look at or, um, so, you know, I was just glad that they were able to give us some comments and.
Okay. Brian, you got any comments you also right now?
Brian just stepped away for a minute. He said that he's going to grab his son, so he'll be right back.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we do still have to add the contract, so um, I don't know if you guys want to go with the standard contract from town council or if we're gonna um, edit it?
I thought you and I talked about that, Tracy, and we're gonna with the standard contract for now.
I will put that in the, the end of the um, RFP.
Yeah, I think the standard contract would be probably best right now.
Um, just uh, another, another issue having to do with the budget says, you know, we had a meeting with the Bar Commission and uh, talked about their budget and capital plan and the maintenance of property. And, you know, they haven't submitted their budget yet. And uh, uh, what we need to do is uh, meet with them again because uh, uh, we need to get a handle around uh, what they're proposing and what the options are and so forth and so on, because uh, um, they're having funding issues. And so we have to make sure that uh, we either have to do something or do something different. So it's an ongoing item to be discussed. Okay, um, anything else under old business?
Um, the, uh, when I was going through the minutes, Mr. Chair, there was um, on the December 14th meeting, we did discuss um, something about a planner looking for, am I missing something good?
You are.
Wait a minute.
Look at Brian. We usually have dogs and cats, you know?
Right? Um, so anyway, so there was um, something about us saying that we would like to receive a letter from the planning board on, and I reached out to, you know, a couple of folks, and I'm hoping that they will give us their, their thoughts on a planner.
Uh, yes, I would, I would say uh, that we have to discuss that during the budget process as well, you know, how that's gonna be structured and reporting and so forth and so on, and what the responsibilities are. So.
Uh, Cooper also noticed that it looked like one of the Bridgewater's, maybe East Bridgewater is looking to hire a planner. I didn't, I didn't notice if it was full-time, part-time, so I don't know if there's an opportunity there.
He's wide awake, Brian.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be putting him to sleep.
Not gonna happen.
Enter the meeting, Will.
That's okay.
Looks like he's interested.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing I'd, I'd like to, uh, did you have anything, Brian, on old business that you wanted to bring up?
We talked about Loon Pond Lodge. The only thing we added was that um, Tracy's gonna include a, um, a standard uh, contract.
No, uh, so I went through the, the RFP as it is with some of the comments. I thought it looked pretty good. Um, I'll take one last pass through it, but um, I, I think things look pretty, pretty good as they are with the parks input.
Okay, good. There's one other thing that I'd like to bring up. Um, and actually, um, you had brought it up, I don't know if it was at the last meeting and a couple of meetings ago. Um, had to do with uh, ADA grants, Brian?
Yep, yeah, the self-assessment, I think I brought up.
Well, I have a surprise for you.
Oh, is this only because I brought Cooper on?
You can thank him. So I um, I called the state and uh, you know, about that, and I said, because I couldn't find any information on it, you know, of what the town had signed and agreed to and so forth and so on. And um, so I found out that um, the grant was actually approved. And so um, the concern at the last time was that it had to be done by June 30th of 2020. And then they were gonna extend it to December 20, December 1st to 2020. And guess what? It's been extended to June 30th, 2021.
Oh.
So um, I would say that we should uh, move forward with that and get a hold of Serphead. And um, have him start working on it, because if we can get this done by June 30th, then we qualify for grants for the fall.
That would be excellent. Yeah, absolutely.
So I was kind of surprised. I wasn't aware of it, you know, I didn't, you know, nobody told us about it, so.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fantastic. We certainly got um, things we could look at doing.
Okay, so uh, does the board uh, wanna, I'll, I'll just go ahead and get Serphead moving on it, and then I'll bring it back to you so you guys can uh, vote on it, okay?
I was gonna say, do we need a vote to?
Not really. You know, we already voted, you know, I didn't vote for it. I mean, that's a long, long time ago. It was December of, actually, it was just as I started, December of nineteen.
2019, yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and do that.
Sounds good.
Okay, I think we're leaving at night. We're on schedule. I can't believe it. Didn't think we would be. Anybody got anything else from the board?
None, good day.
Good. Um, let's see. Uh, the master plan, uh, it's almost 7:30. Uh, we got everybody from the master plan on here or? I don't see uh, Rodney, Jim and.
Hey, Rich.
Yes.
Um, while, uh, while you wait, I think, uh, is there any need for me to keep the FinCom on?
No, there's not.
Okay, I just want that to, to go. Um, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to um, close our meeting?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor? Darren?
Beals, I.
Adam, I.
Larry?
Ashman, I.
All right, thank you very much, guys. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay, um, okay, we don't have a chairperson here.
Is there a vice chair?
The vice chair is here. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so Rodney's not coming, that you know of her?
I haven't heard from him at all today. I thought he was, said he was gonna be here by email.
Okay. Well, we'll just wait one more minute, see if he shows up.
You do know I'm gonna have a smile on my face the rest of the meeting, right, Brian?
Hey, Jim, do you want to, uh, can you text him and ask him if he's coming or?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Rich, Rhonda, Rodney is going to join now.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Hey, Coop is awful quiet, Brian.
He is in awe of what is going on right now.
You on TV, you don't even know it.
Yeah, he's past his bedtime, but he, he can squawk pretty good. So watch out. He had a nap a little earlier than usual, so now he doesn't want to go down. Oh, you look tired.
I assume everybody from the implementation committee has a copy of the master plan.
I have a coffee. I don't have it with me.
Okay.
I read through it before the meeting.
You memorized it, Joe?
Not quite.
Not as good as you used to be, huh?
Yeah, that's right. I'm not as good as I thought I was.
There he is.
There he is.
Hey, sorry about that, technical difficulties. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. Sorry, sorry for the, the delay.
No problem. Okay, so the first thing we need to do is you need to call your committee to order and introduce them. Rodney, please.
Yeah, I'd like to call the Lakeville Master Plan Implementation Committee to order. I'm Rodney Dixon. I'm the chair. You got Jim Rogers, the co-chair. Mr. Joseph Chamberlain, member. Jack Lynch, new member. Rita Garbit, member. And Patrick Marshall. Is Patrick on right now?
I didn't see Patrick.
Don't see him.
Okay, we'll give him a few minutes.
Rodney, I just texted him.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
If the glare on my glasses is too much, let me know and we'll take them off and I'll I'll be a little challenged for sure, but it'll be okay.
Okay, while, while we're waiting for Patrick, while we were preparing for this meeting, Rodney, we were trying to figure out what's available, you know, on the town website. And when we looked at the town website, the planning board, it referred to Serp Ed to get the information. And she probably realized that that particular information had to do with the whole project action plan and so forth and so on. So what Tracy did was, you know, she got copies of the actual plan itself, you know, from Serp Ed.
Right.
With your permission, we'd like to certainly put it on the town clerk's website. Put it on the planning board's website. And of course, the master plan implementation website. And also, we're going to be given a hard copy to the town clerk as a, as a, as a public record to make sure that it's available. And if anybody from the community or anybody, any board member or whatever wants a copy, we have the master copy. So we'll keep the master copy and you can just tell us if you need more or whatever. Is that okay?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the intent of the plan being in the electronic format was to give the ability to anybody who has computer access to the plan so they could tool around with it. Prior to this meeting a little while ago, I had asked for the number of clicks that the plan had and we had only 13, what we call a hit in a year, which is just, there's a reason why. So I, I started tooling around on the website myself to figure out why it was such a challenge. And it was a couple of reasons. I hope with the actions that you and the board take to help alleviate that, we can get far more hits. So we get more people involved to, to read it.
Okay, good. So if there's anything else that you want us to do as far as the website, you know, just let us know.
Yeah, thank you.
While we're waiting on Patrick is coming, one of the questions that I have is, you know, we're going to talk about, you know, all the, I guess, the strategies or the goals or whatever on this plan, you know, in, in relationship to the, to the board, what, what the responsibilities are of the board of selectmen and the town administrator. But one question that I have is that, you know, some of the things we're going to go through, we have accomplished that task. Who, whose responsibility is it to update this goal and action plan?
Well, would, as they come in and as we get the information, we, we as a committee would update the plan itself. We were obviously working with, with Serp Ed originally and Serp Ed used to join our meetings. We would talk about the updates and then they would be incorporated. But now that it's been in whole, you know, in full, I should say, we haven't had a meeting until now, so we haven't had the, the opportunity to actually update it.
Okay.
But, you know, as we meet with people like yourselves and others, as we get the information, we would take the, we would take the updates, but the actual access to it, if that's what you're asking, I don't know who has the authority and the access to update.
Okay, I guess Tracy, I'll ask you a question. Can we change these documents or we have to have Serp Ed? Serp Ed needs to give us the authority to change.
The, the documents are in a PDF format.
Oh, okay.
So if they ship it over to us in a Word format, then we would be able to change it.
Alright, so Rodney, let us know what you want us to do. And meantime, do you want me to, do you want Tracy to get ahold of Serp Ed and get a a document that we can change?
Absolutely. We can have a, a document that can be edited. Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, so I guess I wouldn't say this is an easy task.
True.
So I'm, I am looking at the, the sheets that have, the summary sheets that have the goals and the strategies. Okay?
Yes.
So I don't know if everybody has copies of this master plan to do that or you just want me to?
I don't have them readily available. Jim or Joe, do any of you guys have copies of these at all?
I have a copy of the implementation plan that we were going to be talking about this evening, chapter nine.
I don't have a copy on me, Rodney.
Yeah, neither do I. I don't, I couldn't locate my copy unfortunately. Mr. LaCamera, do you want to go ahead and read it and we can address it as you read it?
Sure. So the, this document here, which is the condensed document that has all of these things in here. We can't find any more of these in the town hall. Was it supposed to be more printed or, because I don't think everybody has copies.
I, Rita, are you on? Rita would know exactly how many cop, of copies that we had. I know that we had ordered some. Jim, you don't remember the, the actual number, do you? Or any of the members of the, of the committee? Do you remember the actual numbers that we had ordered?
I thought it was 16 that.
Oh, okay. So there's not that many, Rita.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, so the question becomes, do we need more? Are we just going to copy from this like you have a couple of new board members here? Do you want us to get copies, have copies of this made? I'll make copies of this ourselves? And have them available for anybody that wants them? This is the one, the condensed one, Rita?
It is.
Has all the goals and anybody?
Does it say executive summary on the front?
Says, no. No, it doesn't.
And it's only the implementation plan inside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus, plus the, the goals and the strategies.
Right, that, which is the.
That one there, that's correct.
Right, that's the one.
Okay, so.
Of the reg, the full master plan.
We have copies of the full master plan too now. Okay, so if anybody wants any of that. But so Rodney, do you want us to make copies of this to have those available too for your committee and other people?
Oh, well, I, if I may, Rich, I did forward this to the, all the master plan members. So they do, they'll have to print it on their printer, but.
Which is a pain.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Now that, I, I just bought a Rema paper. Maybe I have to go get another one.
No, it's, it's not the paper. It's the cartridges, the ink.
True.
Okay, alright, alright, so.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Can anyone see this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have this, which is master plan appendix. It has writing. Is this like all the rough draft stuff? And then I have this master plan, which I think is the one Rita's calling condensed?
That's the one we're supposed to be using, right?
Correct.
I have that other big one that Tracy and I found, but it looks like it was like working, a working copy.
Okay, if anybody like has access right now, I dropped the links to Serp Ed in the Zoom chat for the.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. I'm looking at it and it's in the electronic format for the, for the committee members. Just click, it's very simple. Click on the hyperlink and everything that they're looking at right now is in electronic format.
Okay.
I'm confused because you're talking about a condensed version and a master plan. What's, what's the difference between the two documents? Because I don't, I'm getting confused.
That's the one I just talked about, Tracy, is the condensed one.
The one that pull out plans?
I'm the only one that really, I don't know why, but I, I had a copy.
Okay.
I know that, I know they gave them to the planning board, if I'm not mistaken, Rita. And I don't know, Nate had one for sure, I know, but I don't know who else.
So the ones that I made, that I got from Serp Ed, that's the incomplete plan?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I post the right thing on.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that I got from Serp Ed.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so where we want to begin is Rodney, since you, I, I guess you don't have the, the sheets or whoever, everybody doesn't have the receipts, sheets. So I want to start on page 100.
100?
Which is basically the goal and strategy pages.
Hold on.
Okay.
Okay, so on page 100. Alright. It reads draft zoning changes and development rules. That's page 99. 100 is continued coordination effort strategy, one, strategy 312. Is that the one you're reading?
That's what I have on my page 100.
Correct. Okay.
Correct, correct. Yes, that's correct. So I'm, I'm going, I'm going to 101. I'm sorry, it'd be 101.
Alright, 101. It looks like a spreadsheet.
Yep. That's it.
Okay.
Alright, so, and please interrupt me, you know, at any time because, you know, I'm just commenting on stuff that, you know, we've been assigned to and to look at. And anyways, I'm not, I, I, we, we won't have time. We could spend two hours going through this. We're not going to do that. So just a couple of general comments I want to make about some of these goals and strategy and the, the first one that is there, you know, talks about economic development under the, the actions and it says, focus on the redevelopment opportunity at the former Lakeville Hospital and Dewey's bowling alley. And support local businesses and facilitate new local development in the appropriate areas in time. And then on the strategy side, there's a long locations of Route 18, Route 44 and 105. Okay? My question to that is that we hope the Lakeville Hospital redevelopment project goes forward. Outside of Dewey's Restaurant, which is vacant, as everybody knows, if you, if you look at the industrial park at the T Station, that's fully developed. There's nothing available in there for land anymore. And as you know, 50% of the property is used for housing. So if you look around the Lakeville Hospital, the other lots that are available have already been sold. And some of them have been developed, you know, for new housing as well. There's a 40B project there and then there's a couple of other funeral home and a couple of other things going in there as well. My question is, is that where else in that area would you develop commercial property?
That's a great question. If my memory serves and team helped me out here, I think when we wrote this, well, over a year ago now that it was finalized, what we have today is not what was there. We were talking about opportunity. But what you see today is reality and I think that changed after we the plan. So if that's the case, we'd have to, we'd have to see what is there now and how it relates to what we were, what we were discussing. And have to pull the detailed notes to see exactly what it is that we had referenced, but I would strongly suggest that we edit that to include what is there right now. And then compare that to our notes to see exactly what we were talking about.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, the, the other question, you talk about Route 44. You know, economic development on Route 44. Between the Middleboro line and the Taunton line, there's only a half a mile stretch. And that industrial park that's there is completely full. So besides the old nursery, which has been bought and is going to be developed, I know as well, I don't know of any other area out there that could be developed as far as commercial property is concerned.
Yeah. And I think that's what it is. I think, and again, I don't have my detailed notes in front of me to, to refer to, but if memory serves, a lot of what we were speaking to back then, it was prior to these things happening where, you know, it's been sold and now there's a plan. So what, you know, what I'd ask respectfully is we, we have to. So what, you know, what I'd ask respectfully is we, we have to compare with what you've said to the notes and see if that's exactly what we were talking about. And if not, and if we were off topic, then make the adjustment on the strategy and/or the complementary actions.
That's fine. I just, you know.
Rodney.
Some of the things, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, uh, Rodney, that's pretty much, I think, what's happened on a lot because, you know, we, we finished this a year ago and really a lot of these sections were done even prior to that. So.
Right.
A lot of changes have occurred and I would concur with Rodney that we may have to go back and look at just some of the changes and, um, and make the changes and, you know, yay, we're doing well on the master plan.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So I think we met the, yeah, we, we met, we're meeting the goal, just again, having a year that we haven't met and, uh, this being a year old, it's obviously we need to do. And I think one of the things, Mr. LaCamera, that.
It's Rich, Rodney.
Rich, appreciate it. With regards to the master plan itself, one of the things that I've stressed over the years as chair and as, and as a committee member, is I don't want this plan to be static. I want it to be actionable and malleable. And what I mean by that is this, I don't want it to be printed and sit on a shelf like the last one and gathered dust. So as these things happen, we can compare almost in real time what we've done versus what we thought should be done and then edited accordingly. And, um, and this is a perfect example.
And we're with you. I agree. There's items on here that need to be done. And there's items on here that have been done. And we just want to make sure that we all acknowledge that we haven't done that and we need to fix this, but we have done that.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the last question on that particular one is that it talks about Route 18. Now, I guess clarification on Route 18 and, um, I hate to throw out a streak. But are we talking from Crooked Lane up to the, um, up to Ocean Spray? Are we talking from Route 79 up to Ocean Spray?
I think at one, at one point last year or the year before, we had talked about, um, rezoning and some other things along, um, 18 from 79 up to, uh, Crooked Lane. And I thought we had, we had finished that portion of it. So anything else on 18, uh, I think would be Crooked Lane down to 7, down to 105.
Okay. So you, and I don't know, Jim, you know, what, what has and what hasn't been done. So you're saying that what was rezoned for 79 from Crooked Lane up to the Rotary is already been done?
Well, that was, uh, a year ago, a year and a half ago, I believe that was done.
Okay.
Putting this together, uh, you know, we, it was zoned commercially, um, for, and changed the zoning pattern there. So that's already been done to my knowledge.
Okay. That's good. I just wanted clarification on that. That's fine. All right. Um, let's see. One of the comments here having to do with, um, hiring a town planner to help guide future development in town and to lead new long-term, uh, range plannings. Absolutely. We're with you. In fact, we had suggested to the planning board last February because they didn't want us to go out and hire somebody. They wanted to try to do it with a consultant initially to see what the requirements were and we were behind that. So just so you know, we have put money into the budget, you know, for our town planner, uh, this coming fiscal year now. What level that town planner is going to be is yet to be determined. We have to meet with the, uh, planning board to discuss, you know, what their requirements are and so forth, but we agree with that one. Okay? I guess the other comment, which was, it was a few years out, I think, was to changing the part-time conservation agent to a full-time conservation agent. And I guess the only question, um, and you don't have to answer this question now, is that if that was being the case, I think we'd have to look at currently what the responsibilities are of the, of the conservation agent and determining whether those requirements are being met or we need additional help. So I don't expect you to answer that question. And I know Joe's here and, uh, if Joe wants to make a comment, that's up to Joe.
Well, I would say one of the problems over the years, as we've talked very frequently about hiring, you know, a full-time agent or even a half-week agent or something like that is the nature of the business is it's, you know, Nate would tell you the same thing with building. It comes in spurts. You never know what you need on any given time. It's, it's a very difficult position to fill. Treasurer, you know, kind of what's going to be happening 12 months of the year, that sort of thing. But so, so much of conservation, so much of building, even people going to the planning board, it comes in fits in spurts. You've got nothing going. And then you have a, you know, seven applications come in inside of nine days. So it's very hard to tell. Uh, with a part-time conservation agent, basically you're reactive to things. If you have a full-time agent, you're reactive and you're proactive. You can go out and do things, going through files, assembling files, making sure everything, the, the stuff you don't have time to do if you're only part-time and you're just reacting to things.
Okay. All right. We'll keep that the way it is for now. It's, you know, not recommended for a couple of years. Hey, Brian, I know you stepped away. So, um, you know, I don't want to do all the talking here, guys. So, uh, please, uh, butt in and make comments and whatever. So we had some very good conversation about the economic development already, Brian. I don't know if you were there at the time.
I crank the volume as I put him in his crib. Don't worry. I was listening.
All right. So.
Yeah. When, uh, when it's my turn, I just want to bring up some of the cultural stuff.
Well, we're going to get there.
Okay.
We're not talking about that yet.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm focused on.
Okay. Uh, okay. What else we got here? All right. One of the strategies that's in there and somebody needs to help me, um, having to do with, um, the open space plan. Uh, from what I can read, the open space plan was updated in 2007, excuse me, 2013. Can somebody tell me when it needs to be updated again?
You are, you, it needs to be updated now, Rich. I think it expired actually last year. I know before I got off the open space committee, they were beginning the process of, uh, looking into updating it. So I know it, isn't in need of updating now. And at the time, uh, a lot of, because the master plan was doing a lot of, uh, background work and, and getting things, they were waiting to sort of see what the master plan came up with so that they could dig in more deeply to the open space section.
Okay. Cause, um, you know, now's the time to, uh, apply for grant money. You know, to have, you know, the Serpad, I believe did it last time, if I'm not mistaken, updated, didn't they, Rita? Did the Serpad update the, the open space plan last time?
I think they did. And before I left, I thought that, um, open space was going for grant money with, through Serpad to update it, or I thought they were in the process of it.
Okay. We'll have to follow up on that because, um, I haven't heard that, you know, at all. So.
I talked to Jesse Medford about that, like I said, a couple of years ago, and I thought that they had, were moving forward with funding.
Okay. Uh, cause there is grant money available and that's, Rodney, that's something we need to get on this action plan to be important. Okay. Uh, let's see. Going down on the second page, um, of the, uh, goals, it talks about, uh, housing strategy, uh, more partnership with local developers to build, uh, senior housing with a variety of housing units. I think that, uh, speaking for myself, I, uh, I certainly think that's important. It's obvious that we see in town that, you know, since, uh, LaBaron was changed over from all 55 and older to whatever it wants to be, um, that we have a shortage of, uh, housing for seniors. And I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of that. And I think, uh, Brian and, um, Dylan, I don't know if you want to say anything on that, Brian or Leah, Leah, excuse me?
No, I just, um, agree with Rich that that whole area was supposed to be mostly 55 and over and now it's not. So I'm, I'm afraid that, you know, we're going to not have enough housing to offer seniors who want to, you know, get out of there. Let's say single family, big, whatever, um, property. I know a couple of the members on the planning board to share that philosophy. I don't know if Michelle wants to comment. Is that correct?
Um, you know, Leah, I don't think I've been present for any conversations in regards to senior housing. And unfortunately, like the LaBaron was prior to my time.
Okay.
Yeah, I would extend on what you did say, Leah, that, um, the change from senior housing to whatever certainly is an interesting one where I do worry that our seniors kind of are going to get priced out of their own homes and they might want to stay in, in the town, but not have a place to go. Large minimum lot sizes, larger homes that they might've had that had been in their families for generations. I mean, they are tougher and tougher to keep up with and pay taxes on. So I, I definitely am supportive of having a, a good, well-thought-out plan to make sure everybody that wants to stay in the town they love gets a chance to do that. If I can make a general comment on the master plan, there are so many things in here and that's not bad. It's good. It shows hundreds, if not thousands of hours of input from the community and, and the, the committee itself. It's very easy to get, you know, paralysis by analysis on this thing. Um, and I think we really should hunker down and figure out what are the priorities and what are the, what are the things that feed into others? Whether it is hiring a, a full-time planner, whether it is a full-time conservation agent, does one benefit from the other? And, and just start somewhere, start nibbling off little bits here and there as we can. And then the rest will start to fall into place. And I fully support what you said, Rodney, on keep this a living document. Make sure that we're always going back and, you know, if you almost think about technical books, they go out and publish these errata pages every now and then. It says, here's the updates in the last quarter. Like, let's do that. You know, like you guys were saying earlier, um, the, um, the economic development, what sites have been developed or what other items are already ticked off. So we can just keep laser focusing on the areas that haven't been touched yet. So I would, I would just, you know, start with that, you know, let, let's not get too, you know, let's not get paused in, in the number, sheer quantity of these things in these pages, but let's just focus then on some of the more important ones that will feed into others.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I'm a, I'm a healthcare administrator. We just, the term that I use is pick the low hanging fruit. You know, uh, you have a, you have different levels of effort and different level of reward. And I agree a hundred percent. And there's a lot of data and, um, the numbers in particular about housing and seniors kind of hits home insofar as we had a lot of discussion about this and some of our, at least my observation, and it might be shared with some of the team members, is some of these developments like LaBaron that wanted originally 55 and older, through no fault of their own, ended up changing their model. And it was something that it was not originally, uh, proposed to the town. So then there's a change. Are there other developments like that in Lakeville where, uh, it's been proposed for one thing? And then ends up being another, and that's going to negatively affect the seniors in this town. Um, I can't speak to that, but I would, I would suspect that COVID, um, has, has really, uh, adjusted many people's plans. But, uh, you know, from the economic impact where, uh, the economy, the economy, excuse me, has been devastated. So the developers need to make a change in order to, to survive. And then how does that affect, you know, the residents of Lakeville, especially our seniors? So yeah, I'm with you too. Um, I appreciate that very much. That, uh, the feedback. So thank you.
Okay. There is, there is one thing that we, we're talking about and you've started to identify some of the issues. And that is, these are all common goals that we have and there are 40, 50 of them. The question is prioritizing them. What's important to the board? What's important to the conservation? And, you know, identify and highlight some of those that we ought to be working on. Because, you know, it's easy for us to make a plan, put it together and then simply say, okay, here, you're at it. But some of the online of these committees, these groups have to tell us what's their priority. Uh, so we can start to, if you want to use pick the low hanging fruit, but pick the ones that are going to fit the most. Leaving it up to us, we're the ones put the plan together. So they're all important. I just need, we just need to fit on the, uh, the important parts of these things.
That's a good point, Jim. And if you, and if you look at the, um, the, um, what is it? Almost a 10-year plan here, you know? I think some of the other stuff that's out farther in the future should be brought up front. You know, now, I mean, like rules and regulations for the planning board as an example. Those need to be updated now, not three or four years from now. And, you know, so those type of things and, you know, some of the things that, uh, having to do with, uh, buildings and stuff like that, which we'll, we'll touch upon, but. The next thing here had to do with the, uh, this economic development committee. Uh, Brian, uh, brought this up, um, I don't know, a number of months ago and he said, oh, okay. What does the economic development committee do? And we looked at it and we said, they haven't met in over three years. So we're saying, wow, what are we going to appoint that committee for? And then Brian says, no, no, what we need to do is reevaluate what their charge is so they understand what their responsibilities are. And so we did reappoint the, uh, the members. They wanted to be reappointed. Okay. It wasn't a problem. So I think one of the things that, uh, we got to do is, uh, I figure out what their responsibilities are. And I know that Brian is, uh, is on that committee. Brian, you're not, you're on the committee, not Leah.
Will you inform me? Get up to your webpage.
We got to get a handle on that, Rodney, you know, as, as to what their responsibilities are because they haven't done, not, not criticizing them.
Right.
They didn't have any direction as to what they needed to do. Okay? All right. Let's see.
Can I jump in here, Mr. Chair, for a second? So, um, in staying on this page 100, um, I know we've touched on it a little bit, but rekindle partnership efforts, the 613 uh, between private landowners, land conservation groups and state and local governments to enable future open space acquisition. I feel like that's, um, trying to be done, but we don't necessarily have a direction, so to speak. Because I think there's so many people involved. It's come up a couple of times, one time specifically in the last year where some land was coming out of chapter land. Um, we found that, you know, we had a little bit of, uh, uh, glitch, so to speak. So not every party was knew the same time. But there was interest from some of the conservation groups to try to purchase, you know, some of that land that was coming out of chapter land. But because we, you know, because it, it seemed like there was a lot of people just kind of working independently. And, you know, the opportunity, the timing and everything, it kind of fell through. Um, so it, it's almost like we're trying, we're naturally coming to these, you know, to these, um, these, these strategies, but in some cases, I think we need a little more direction, um, as to who should actually be doing what. So I'd hate to see us lose out on any other, you know, on anything. I mean, of course, we can't purchase a couple million dollars worth of, you know, land that, we don't have that kind of money, but on smaller parcels, we certainly could try to partner with some of the conservation groups to, to do that. So I just feel like, um, a little more direction maybe. Um, and, and you know, internally, I've worked on a 61AB, a, uh, plan to take the who needs to alert who and, but just then communicating with open space and conservation and, um, so that we're all on the same page. So that's almost be done without. I know. Anyways.
Leah, on that thought, if I may, um, I think your points are excellent. I think this is an area where, and let me scroll to the next page here. So I don't say something and somebody immediately corrects me. I mean, it looks like this is an area that is primarily outlined as the lead party being planning board, but I think as the board of selectmen, this is also an area where we can try to help out. And, you know, do we come up with a town policy that says every year in the budget, we're going to set aside? You know, do we come up with a town policy that says every year in the budget, we're going to set aside. Some small amount, so that when those little parcels come up, maybe we have an opportunity. Because even if we build the partnerships, if we don't have a funding mechanism, it's never gonna happen.
Well, and that's one of my further questions is, I know the uh, Community Preservation Fund has been voted down twice. Um, Rita, maybe you know if two times is accurate. I remember at least two times. Um, so maybe that's something we should be trying to put forward. Um, I know people will start cringing when it's another tax, but you know, that, I, I don't. I don't know if that specific thing is mentioned in here as, you know, the Community Preservation Act. I think there's a lot of uh, young folks who believe in the environment living in town now. Um, it might be the right time to try that again. I, I, you know. I don't know. Yes, Michelle, I think.
Hi Leah, I, I think that, that is something that I would totally be on board with. Um, I've had discussions with other people in town. In regards to this, and um, there was even uh, some information sent to me by a friend. Um, in regards to a town in Rhode Island that, that um, for sales of property, there was a three percent. Tax on the sale of properties over X number of dollars, and that money would go into a fund. That could be used by the town to preserve. Land like this, and I think, I think this is great. This is something that we should definitely consider what our options could be. Uh, what, you know, in order to do this, because I think there is a lot of, you know, people that would get on board. And I'm definitely, you know, willing to put my time and energy towards. Get, you know, getting some support around town and, and joining a committee too.
If I can add in just Rich from the Open Space Committee, um, and I don't have this particular. Document in front of me, but I do know, uh, even on open space, there's a large discussion on. The chapter lands, because when they do become available, right now, there is no mechanism to purchase them really, if we want, with the timing and whatever else. And that was, that's sort of a goal with open space as far as that's always going to be there, continuous, whatnot, whether it be the. CPA funding or some other mechanism, as you mentioned, as far as just the town deciding to put money aside. Right now, one of the frustrating things with open spaces, you see the parcels come up. And they're really, unless there's an outside agency that wishes to. Purchase them or go in with the town, the town itself doesn't have the funding for it. Um, and that also does hurt the town with as far as grants, because obviously, a lot of grant purchases. Want the town to have some skin in the game too, and if we're not able to do that, um, we leave a lot on the table. Um, you know, I've made no, uh, you know, I've always been a fan of the CPC. Funding mechanism myself. I know in the Town of Born that I work for, um, they've used it to. Get a lot of open space and a lot of land, set aside conservation and whatnot, not necessarily for public use, but just. Uh, there that's been able to help, as well as other things as well too, as far as um. Historical preservation, recreational, et cetera, but, you know, this particular. Portion of the master plan really does relate to the open space, just as far as the frustration. From that committee that just a lot of times, there's a lot of. It'd be great, you know, we hear, we heard a lot on open space, we heard a lot with the master plan. People want to protect the rural nature of the town, or at least the town of Lakeville that they recall, not necessarily. Keeping out business or, or economic development, but just preserving at least the town also as. What draw all of us here, and right now, I don't think the town really has that ability to do that, so. Um, that's where a big chunk of this comes from.
Hey, I think um, one of the things that needs to be done is that uh, that they at least it passed to two. Um, things that have been brought to us, one up on Holland Road and one having to do with the Lakeville Country Club. And uh, you know, the Lakeville Country Club, there's, you know, seven point two million dollars, which was. Ridiculous, but that's another story for another day, but um, one of the things that the open space needs to do is, is. Is uh, find areas that we should be protecting, to pri- prioritize those areas. And talk to the, the owners of that land right now. And say, hey, are you guys willing to protect the land? You know, what are you gonna do with it in the future? And be more proactive instead of being reactive. You know, if you take some of the success stories that we've had, and we've had a lot. You know, having to do with the Betty's Neck and the Ted Williams and, you know, the Wilkie Farm and. You know, the Tamarack and the land up on Highland Road, I mean. Those weren't, somebody just showed up on our door and said, oh, you guys wanna buy this? No, we talked to them ahead of time, because then we looked at opportunities for grants and funding, and then the town, you know, subsidize it. Subsidize it uh, the rest of it, so um. That, that's one thing that I think is important that needs to be done. You know, with the Open Space Committee to say, okay, these are the ten parcels, pieces of property, whatever, and. Call them up and say, hey, listen, what are you guys gonna do, you know? You know, do you wanna sell the property? Are you gonna continue where it is? You wanna protect it? I think that that needs to be done as well, not only talking, not. Also talking about the funding side.
And Ri- Rich, if I may, if we could dovetail those conversations into the master plan. To, if they don't already know, to enlighten them what the citizens of Lakeville want. And this is what they want, and they've articulated it, you know, pretty clearly, uh, like, you know, like Patrick said. Uh, earlier, so I would, I, I would advocate. That whoever's gonna have the conversation from whatever commit, responsible committee, is to please dovetail it into the master plan. And give them the elevator pitch. Hey, this is what the master plan is, this is what's come to our attention. And, and explain to them and educate them on. What, what it is that we're looking to do when we acquire that property.
Yeah.
I think that would help a great deal.
And most of these properties, as you know, are already with sixty-one A or sixty-one B, so it's not like we don't know who they are.
Right.
We know the farms, we have lists of farms, we have lists of properties that are in sixty-one A and sixty-one B. Okay, that's good, um. And, and it's obvious, you know, and I, I think that all of us agree that uh, we wanna keep um. A mixed um, use of our, our, our resources to provide commercial property and development, and that's a whole different. Um, thing that needs to be, you know, that needs to be discussed, and I think, like you said, Rodney, we need to focus in on really where. Where, so we put commercial property, where do we need rezoning? You know, that need to be done, and set that strategy, and then we can say, okay. Hey, we got this land available. You wanna come? You wanna come to Lakeville and develop something, but. But right now, if you look at it, I mean, our industrial park is completely full. There's no, there's no space in there, you know, at all, and so I, I think that that's a strategy that we need to uh, straighten out. Um, just staying on the um, the um, the farms, um. We are putting the um, agricultural um. Farm law, uh, farm bylaw on this coming town meeting. We have to make some changes to the bylaw to make it easier for us to do, but we are moving ahead with that, just so you know.
All right, is that, you mean a right to farm?
Right to farm, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the term, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the right to farm. Um, it was supposed to be on there last year, but because of COVID, we had to. Shorten the agenda, the warrants for the town meeting. Um, so, our hope is to have, make sure it's on there for this, this year's town meeting.
And uh, we already met with the Agricultural Commission, so, you know, we'll be ready to go, so they'll be, be holding a public hearing, so that. That is one goal we're gonna make.
Very good.
Um. Joe?
Uh, question for you, have you, in terms of uh, right to farm, been talking to the people in Westport?
Uh, I've talked to the people in Rochester.
Rochester.
I've talked to the people in Westport, no.
Westport is, I mean, they've been going round and round and back and forth on, on that's a hot issue over there, because they got, they have a lot of farmland in Westport. And I think from everything that I've been reading in the newspapers over the past two, three, four years in Westport. I think uh, we, we can gain a lot of knowledge from the trials and tribulations they've gone through.
Okay, good point. Okay, the um, the other thing um, having to do with um, the uh. Uh, historical district, I, I did talk to Nancy LaFave and uh. Um, she says they're working on it, especially the old library, they're trying to get that on the historical. Um, there's a couple of hangups, but they are moving forward with that. Um, and just so you know, uh, on here, you also mentioned the. Uh, historical study and the acro- uh, ecological study or something. Those two things have been funded, and so, uh, according to Nancy, they're trying to find somebody to do it for them. So they have already been funded, ready to go, so that's just another thing that's been accomplished as far as the. Talking about the historical district at one oh five and eighteen.
Which number are you reading, Rich?
Uh, I'm sorry, um. Maybe it was later down, maybe I'm ahead of myself, but I, but I just saw the historical uh. Uh, strategy uh, five-three-one.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the uh, Natural Resources Strategy, uh, having to do with um. Work with groups and arts council to determine actions that the town can need, can undertake to support more cultural events. Um, Brian, I know Brian was on top of this, and I, I know Leah wants to mention this. Um, you may or may not know, uh, but, you know, uh, the um. Marijuana agreements include um, ten thousand dollars donation. Uh, every year to the town for whatever purpose they wanna use. And originally, and we just, Brian just renegotiated three of those agreements, thank you, Brian, that um. They wanted to say, well, we'll give it to somebody, you know, whatever, and our position was, was that the uh, Board of Selectmen. Should decide how that money gets utilized in the town of Lakeville. And so what Brian had talked about um, was establishing a committee. Where we take those funds, and those funds right now are uh, thirty thousand dollars a year to go up to seventy thousand dollars a year, so it's a significant amount of money. And the idea, I don't know, Brian, you wanna speak up? Go ahead.
Oh, you're, you're right on track. So essentially, in their contracts, uh, there's a number of different um. Payments they have to make to the town, one of them being an annual charitable contribution, so. Uh, each of these companies, each of the con- individual contracts, so if you have, like, we have a, a company that has. Multiple contracts due to doing multiple types of marijuana business in town, the way that CCC currently has it done. Where every year they have to make a donation to the town, ten thousand dollars, and then we turn around and decide, you know, what nonprofit entity would benefit the most from that. Um, so, you know, now that we have a, a few more agreements under our belts and/or those being renegotiated and adding some of these clauses. Um, we will have the ability to turn around and, you know, look at a list of, you know, who in town could benefit on these nonprofits, you know, Historical Society could be one of them, I suspect. And, and, you know, help implement some of these things. Um, so going forward, thankfully, have a, a couple more resources to draw on, at least for the next five years.
Yeah, I think the thing is that, you know, we could do a lot more programs, you know, in town, whether it's. You know, the Lakeville Arts Festival, they do a great job, but they also do, you know, concerts, we do programs for the kids and stuff like that, and I think that. That's where the board thinks, you know, a lot of these things, you know, can be done, you know, to help out, like you said, the nonprofits, so. The plan is, even though we have finalists, as Brian mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, that, you know, we'll form a committee. You know, of people involved, you know, in some of these organizations to decide how that money is gonna be spent, so. I think that's a great thing, and I, I think, Brian, thank you, Brian. Um, Leah, you said you wanted to mention something about the culture while we're here?
Um, yeah, you, you sort of touched on it. I mean, we've had so many people, you know, I, Brian and I follow social media. Um, you know, there's always folks, as soon as this right to farm even hit, you know. Uh, the Lakeville page, not necessarily posted by us, but. You know, there's so many people that are like, why can't we have in a regularly occurring um. Farmer's market here, things like that, and I, I thought, I thought you had heard some of the same comments that. You know, folks wanted some more of that agricultural kind of opportunities. Um, but, you know, also this past, you know, and this is something that I'm gonna try to work with the parks. Um, park commissioners on, but folks were like, can we, you know, decorate. Downtown more. Now, what downtown means, I don't know, because we don't like have a downtown like uh, Middle Borough does, but. So I, I think there is interest out there, and um, for some of these other cultural kind of things. I, I mean, for example, the last time we had the Winter Fest. I, I, I think the couple of times we had it, it was very well attended, so. Um, I don't know if you have folks that were passionate about that, who we could. Reach out to, to get on some of these committees, or if people even, you know, responded um, to all the. Um, you know, the surveys that they were interested in that kind of stuff, but. You know, being cultural has a very big social media presence, and I think, you know, if, if, if we. Again, you can't just do it without being prepared, though. You can't just say, oh, let's have whatever, and then have no one, you know, um. Uh, no one there to help with it, let's say. So I just didn't know if you had certain people that may have, you know, reached out more than others. When they were talking about some of the cultural stuff, folks that we could, you know, interest in a committee or two.
And Leah, you're spot on about all the social media comments, and, you know, for those not familiar with it, like, open meeting law makes it very hard for us to go on there and make any statements about what we think's a good idea or a bad idea, et cetera. Um, and given, you know, there's so many comments on there, but. Barely a peep actually come into the office through, you know, if we wanna call them official channels, I mean, folks don't feel bad to. Click the contact us links on the town webpage, and, and you put it in there, like, I don't need a response, here's just something I wanna get off my chest, or say that I, you know, would like to support to. Help us get those communication channels going and pass it on to the right folks that might not be watching social media. Um, so, you know, definitely put the um, the passion you've got for making the posts out there, and so, you know, getting the feedback into us as, if you can as well.
Okay, um, just following up one more thing, uh, having to do with the uh, Natural Cultural Resources and Strategy five-four-two. It says, supports the efforts to investigate the possibility of merging the town's historical commission, historical society. And I noticed one of the things that was on there was a handicap ramp, well, I don't know if you noticed, but there's a handicap ramp going up now, somebody donated it to, which is great. The Historical um, Society. Um, one of the problems is that uh, it's a question of not merging. It's a question is that they would have to donate the property to the town in order for us to uh, take over that facility, but that's for another. Day and another discussion. Okay, where are we here?
I mean, I do just, in general, feel like um, you know. It's almost like someone is secretly working off the master plan. Might I say Nate Darling, but. You know, Nate's very familiar with the master plan, and, you know, um, he, he, he knows this document inside and out, so. If, if one person, you know, um, can even. Get a whole bunch of us other folks to, you know, almost do what's in here without a whole lot of. Not necessarily bad, but cooperation, imagine how much we could stick with this if we were actually working together, you know, so. Um, so Nate, Nate is definitely one of the biggest proponents, and I've learned a lot from him. I, I can't believe the stuff that he knows this inside and out, and, you know. And every time I ask him a question, he'll always say, at the end, he'll say, you know, there is a section in the master plan about that too, you know, so. Um, I feel like if we could get all our groups, all our committees and everybody to become more familiar with the document. Um, I think it could only help.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that's what we were talking about before, what uh, what Rich had mentioned. Uh, and, and, and Brian about what's related, who's related. Uh, the, the actions in, in, you know, of one, how they affect another. And I think that's a great idea in, into really, for all of the committees or. Commissions to familiarize. uh, commissions to familiarize themselves with this document. Again, I think it'd be better. Everyone would be familiar with it, they would understand it. And as they, they look at it, they study it and they recognize, oh, well, this is what's coming up. And I think that was part of the challenge in our committee. Um, you know, we could, we could identify who does what. But are they aware that they need to do that? And if so, you know, is it on their priority list uh, or not? So I think that's a great idea, Leah. I really, I really appreciate that. If there's any way that the select, uh, you know, that the selectmen uh, you know, could get the word out during their meetings and just be consistent and persistent with the message. Uh, if that's allowable, um, it would be appreciated.
Um, I will go back to something that you and I think uh, Rich had discussed earlier with, you know, um, whatever we can do to get it publicized. I, my first, my first uh, try at getting anything off of our town website is through the app on my phone.
Okay.
And that's not always, I think the, the, the website is much better on the desktop version. I struggle when I'm trying to find things. So that could be, you know, that could be happening to other people too. And then they're like, oh, there's this master plan document. And then when they have to do five different searches to try to find it. Whereas if you go to the actual desktop version, you can find things a lot, I think, a little easier. So that's just, you know, the difference between an app and the actual website, you know.
I can say on the actual website last week in preparation, um, in part preparation for this meeting, I was talking to Rita and then uh, eventually ended up talking to Tracy because I went on the website. And I had a bear of a time trying to locate stuff and, and Tracy, thank you if you're still on. I appreciate your uh, educating me on the what can and cannot be changed on the, on the uh, the public facing page. But we really need to tout it. And one of the things when we're looking is, I love the logo. It's, it's very uh, recognizable, very easy. Um, but also have it if again, possible and Tracy said what uh, could and could not be done. But make it more accessible and, and Rich, you'd said to put it in multiple locations. Let's make it available to people. So letting people know about our history and who, who we are, what we're about. I think that is a perfect location for new people when, uh, because they're tech savvy, coming to Lakeville. Well, what's Lakeville about? And how that master plan is in the about section and have it in various sections. So when people are uh, tooling through it, they can see it. Um, and actually have it though. I mean, that was one of the challenges that we had the draft, we didn't have the actual plan. And if we did, it was buried and it was extremely difficult. And I think that contributed to the tur- uh, to the thirteen hits in one year because of the difficulty trying to locate it.
Rodney, I'm worried I was five of those hits downloading the PDF.
Hey, well, thank you. I appreciate it. Keep going.
All right.
Okay, I um, I actually, uh, these, these were two sided and then flipped them over. And I actually missed a page that was um, having to do with services and facilities, um, which is um, seven, seven point two, I guess. Maybe I'm, maybe I am in the right page, but anyways.
Yeah.
Um, just a couple of comments on the uh, some of the facilities. Um, first of all, having to do with Asso One Sit. Um, you may or may not be aware, but the town has put over a million dollars, you know, in Asso One Sit. You know, over the last um, six years, uh, combination of town money and six hundred thousand dollars of grant money, thanks to uh, Nate Darling and his um, Green Communities Initiative. Um, but there is work that needs to be done, you know, as far as the school. And um, it was my understanding that the uh, school committee had uh, submitted another request to the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority this year, and they didn't. And I talked to the superintendent and I, I said, uh, how come that wasn't done? And um, he said, because of COVID nineteen, and I understand all that. But there is other programs that are available, other programs that are available. And because it's very difficult to get approved and um, contrary to what people think. I know we have some handicap accessibility problems and so forth, but overall, that school's not in some pretty good condition. If you go inside, it's, you know, one of the better. Um, I shouldn't say that. It's very well maintained. Um, but we do need some windows and things like that. So there is some isolated grants that we can apply for. And um, we, I have a meeting with the uh, Regional FinCon Committee on February tenth, and I want to discuss, you know, what those options are and get some of those uh, grants submitted. So yeah, it's been submitted a few times and it hasn't made the list. Um, anyways, but uh, it's something that needs to stay on this list and that is a goal. Um, the next thing uh, has to do with the um, highlight facility and improve and upgrade the administration facility. Well, I, I guess this has been uh, on the radar for three years. It's gone back to town meeting three times. And uh, finally this past year, you know, we got it funded the way we wanted to get funded and actually build the building. And of course, we couldn't do that because of COVID nineteen. But the plan is, is that, you know, we're designing the plans right now and they're going to be reviewed soon. And that we plan to have that uh, done this summer guaranteed. So just so you know. Uh, okay. Okay, uh, says uh, pursue Americans with disability transition plan and make a necessary improvements to municipal facilities. Um, I don't know, some of you may have been on the uh, the meeting when we talked about it. Um, the board um, was not aware that the um, the grant had actually been approved. Um, and there was an extension by the state to do the study and it's been extended to uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the boat, the, the board has decided to uh, move forward with that study. So that, that is going to happen uh, over the next few months. Okay, a big one on here. Consider providing more staff to support the maintenance needs of the town in the Ted Williams Camp. Um, I don't know if you realize, but the town committed to full two, full, two new full-time uh, staff members for the highway department. And the highway department is now taking over uh, all of the maintenance and of the facilities for all the parks outside the buildings, okay? All the grounds and so forth. And um, you know, if you get a chance, you know, um, look around. Because um, you know, Frank and the highway guys have done a terrific job. Um, just as an example, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the highway department went down to Clear Pond, which hadn't been uh, cleaned up in years, years, trees all over the place, branches, everything. They went down there and they um, cleaned it up, not a hundred percent yet, but they took five, five dump load, five truck dump loads out of branches and stumps and old trees. So we'll make a significant, you know, improvement in that area. The other thing that's going to be done and uh, Frank's committed to this, the highway superintendent, is to redo and open the trails at the Ted Williams Camp and redo and open the trails at the Clear Pond Road, Clear Pond Park, excuse me. So uh, he's made a lot of progress there. He's not done yet, but uh, so I, I know the board am I, I know I am and the board is very happy. Uh, oh, there's another uh, person there. It just came in. Cooper. So um, we've done that. And so that, that has been accomplished and it's really uh, it's really working out uh, well.
That, that's awesome because I know in the plan and also talking with uh, constituent, not my constituents, but the citizens of Lakeville, your constituents, that they multiple times have mentioned in these workshops about the trails at Ted Williams Camp in particular and uh, and with Clear Pond. So that's great news. And I think that's something that um, should be touted because, you know, th- this is what they've wanted. It's coming to fruition. And um, you know, again, we can, we can mark it on our, on our master plan, update that. So thank you.
I make a, can I make a comment? What, you know, this evening you've mentioned, I noted down nine things that have already been accomplished.
That's great.
The town of people do not know about. We have, we have to somehow publicize that through refreshing this plan, putting it together. The committee has to get together and we have to put it out there so that people understand it. If this is a dead document and all they see is these pages, they're not going to pay attention. But if they see transactions like you've mentioned, and have been mentioned this evening, then they're going to pay more attention to this document.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and I think if, if you go back to your comment, Rich. Um, you know, a lot of times, some of these priorities are our priorities as we put down. They may not be yours or anybody else's. So some of us have to go back and reorient that and make it a living document, reorient those priorities and get away from just having it on pieces of paper.
Yeah.
It's being for every committee. So I mean, I, I think the committee itself has to get together and uh, start moving and putting to get, putting it together in a way that we can present it to people in town, but also if everybody can sort of help us restructure some of these priorities that make, make it more meaningful to the people in town.
Great.
My two cents worth.
A quick question if I may. Um, once the plan was finalized and published, how much interaction, like, there's a lot of items in here that are more department in nature, not necessarily policy. I mean, how many, how many departments have been approached to say like, hey, here's, here's what the residents came up with the master plan. Here's a number of articles that may have, may be related to your department so that they would at least have them in the back of their minds to say, yeah, these are feasible, maybe two or three years out. So they can work them into capital plans or, or how they, you know, work day to day, like the Ted Williams um, camp with the staff is a great example. You know, how can they make those plans in the future? So then circle back with you guys and say, yep, check, 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 we're making progress. Um, or are we just kind of hoping they're going and reading this and maybe they're not?
Yeah, we met with all of the, we, we met with all the responsible parties. Uh, Rita, did we miss anybody in the last two years? Um, do you recall? I thought we met with all the appropriate committees and uh, and commissions that were in the master plan. Uh, when we started to update the master plan from before.
We, we met with all the uh, department heads or committees.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. So Brian, we, we've done that. Um, and I know when COVID hit though, uh, that kind of threw a monkey wrench in everything unfortunately for us because we had a good head of steam going. Uh, you know, we were, we were full steam ahead, had met with everybody, got the updates, got the most relevant data. And then COVID hit and it stopped us in our tracks unfortunately. But uh, we need, like Jim said, we need to get going again. And it's been almost a year since we've last met. Um, so we got to get this going and sooner rather than later.
And we can, we can revisit those people, you know, at the end of the year uh, to get their input again, to update everything.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have to be interactive contributors, otherwise this is going to die on the table.
Yeah, and, and I, and I agree and it's um, you know, there's been a lot of work put into this plan by all parties involved and, and, and you're right, I don't want to see this thing die a, a slow death.
Okay, uh, continuing on, a couple of important ones I forgot that were on a previous page there. Um, one was to investigate uh, an expansion, an upgrade of the existing fire station. Um, as you know, actually, the last time I was so, a selectman in two thousand and six, um, I was the one that insisted that we have a study done. And um, and then it was done in two thousand and seven. But that plan did not get implemented the way it should have been implemented. And so um, now we have a situation, it's not just the fire department, that's the problem. It's the town office building is a problem as well. I mean, you know, that we have, you know, I'm sure most of you have been in there and you can see that, you know, not only we kind of squeezed together there um, in certain areas, but the problem is uh, storage space, which Rita knows very well. Uh, is a serious problem. So um, our plan and the board, I was, we were hoping to discuss it tonight, but all of a sudden our uh, agenda filled up, but uh, I put it on the next week's uh, next agenda. Is that what we want to talk about is um, two buildings and uh, what the options are. What we can do in the short term and what we can do in the long term. And um, so um, there's multiple options that we can discuss. Including building just a standalone fire station, you know, or taking the existing, existing town office building and fire station, making that the fire station. Uh, and then just building a new town hall. Uh, in the interim, you know, I know the uh, the old, the old library right now is uh, the company uh, cafe that was in there has gone out of business. Do we use that facility in the short term? So this definitely is going to be addressed uh, one way or the other. And uh, the plan would be, would be to put some funding on town meeting to revisit that whole um, survey and study and look and document what the options are and then come up with the costs. Because it's definitely something we have to do. So, just so you know.
And Rich, one of the, with that study, once that comes up, um, I asked this question of, of the committee, um, members in, in the planning board, um, God rest us all with zinc and um, one of the questions I had asked repeatedly, and I didn't really get a straight answer was how much property in Lakeville can be developed? And if we develop that available property, how many people will we top out at?
All right, that's a tough question.
And so when we talk about open space and, and what I was looking for as an answer is how much open space, if we could, if we could um, guesstimate that and if it came to fruition at a hundred percent, that would take so many, you know, uh, uh, people off the, you know, off the count. But if we couldn't purchase it and it got developed with, say, residential, you know, where are we at? And I think that's extremely important when you talk about a municipal building because if you, if you figure it takes X number, and I'm sure you guys have all the calculations, what you need from the municipal perspective to support um, X number of people. Well, that number is going to go up or down based on future growth. And if we don't know what the future growth is in, in pretty close to calculation, we're going to be off and we might build a brand new building. Municipal building that's going to be insufficient.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you an example that when we uh, we built the um, COA building, okay? We built that building with the infrastructure, park expansion. So if we were going to add, which will probably do something, that's another thing that's on the list, that'll probably be something in the future. To put an additional room on the side of our office, whatever it happens to be. We don't have to add any infrastructure because we already built that into the building.
Got it.
When you do things like that and you build a town office building, the way, if it was a town office building, let's say, you know, it would be a one-story building, you know, and then you very easily could add, you know, additional space onto that building in the future if you had to. But where it comes with a fire station, that's a lot more difficult, you know, to do because you're, you're really trying to build it, you know, based upon what the needs are, the equipment that you have and so forth. Uh, fire stations are very, very expensive to build. If you're going to build a standalone fire station, now you're talking about twelve million dollars. Minimum compared to eight million dollars for a police station. Because it's a lot, it's a completely different animal. So there's a lot of, you know, pros and cons. And so that's why when we do this further study and we come up with the alternatives, I mean, okay, there's a new pu- a new fire station, twelve million dollars, we take the existing building where the town office is, we renovate that. Is that going to be substantial? I don't know. But those are the times of things, you know, that you need to look at. So it's, it's, it's not an easy solution. But one thing I will say, you talk about growth and expansion, you know, in residential homes in town. If you look at the, the residential development that's going on right now. You know, you got the LaBaron, which was permitted many years ago, okay? That complete rollout, believe it or not, is three hundred and eighty-six units if that happens. They're not even halfway there yet, you know, for that particular project. If you take, you know, the, the project, the Masquerade River down there, that's uh, thirty-one, sixty-one, a hundred and twenty, twenty-five units. But if you look at residential developments, you know, like this town is, has many big residential developments, as you know. There's none of those going on. And the reason why there's none of those going on is because there's no land available to develop on that. Now, I'm not saying there's not pieces of land, you know, the golf courses, you know, as an example could be and so forth, but there's not a lot of property out there to, to develop great, big, big, big uh, residential developments in. to, to develop great, big, 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 uh, residential developments anymore. So anyways, I'm just throwing that two cents.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, um, one of the other things that was on here, uh, is adding, um, providing additional full-time staff to meet acres demands. Um, we added two full-time firefighters this past year. Just so you know. It's worked out.
Jim, you keep in common, is that 10 things that have been accomplished?
You got it.
Right.
All right, I, I don't know, I know everybody's probably tired. I am. Um, anyways, um, you know, I think we need to, um, maybe have a, you know, another follow-up meeting. I mean, you know, um, uh, to discuss some of these things further, but I think everybody's point does, points are well taken that, you know, we need to try to prioritize what we want to try to accomplish. You know, let's say 2021. And we've already talked about a number of things that I think that are already, uh, you know, uh, uh, are going to be accomplished, but I think some of the things in the planning board area, you know, some of those things need to be addressed sooner than later. Uh, one of the things we talked about was the, uh, open space, you know, somebody's proposing a, a residential, uh, open space, you know, bylaw. Okay? Um, those type of things. So, um, like we say, we can't do everything, but I, I think we can make a lot of progress in some of these areas in a short period of time.
I, I agree. Appreciate it.
Brian, you want to say anything? Two cents or?
No, I mean, it's great work, but I just want to go back to Rodney's, um, statement about making sure it doesn't gather dust. So however, we can help out and kind of keep nudging people along. And let us, let us know what we can do or who we need to help, who we need to get to help out.
We will. Appreciate it.
Leah?
I just, uh, you know, for anyone who's watching at home, i- it seems like we have a lot of different ideas. We want open space, but we want commercial development, but we want housing too. Um, there is a way to do, to do all three. I mean, you know, there's, it, it can be done. So what we're looking for isn't unrealistic. It's just, it takes some planning and, um, and it, and it takes commitment from everybody to, to try to stick to the plans that we put in place. So um, it may sound like, you know, well, you can't have housing if you want open space. Well, you know, I think if we do it right, I think we can.
Well, the good news is that it's all documented.
Right.
Whether we agree with it or not, that's okay. You know, we can change our strategies, we can change our plans, we can discuss options and so forth. So but the good news is we have a document that we can work on, that people spend a lot of time putting together, you know, with the residents of Lakeville and, and expressing their opinion. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, having gone out over the past two weeks to get, uh, my sixty signatures, you took, and you talked to the, the residents. I live in LaBarren. And these people have no idea what's going on in the town. They have very little, they have no idea that this is a planning board or what I do. And they have very little understanding of how to find out what's going on. My other comment is, having been in LaBarren or living in LaBarren, I can tell you that they're going full guns to build uh, single-family homes down here in the back of me. And they've done, built the townhouse, they have a, I believe, a 25-year townhouse unit, but they're now building, uh, single-family homes, uh, at a very rapid pace.
I know. I agree. I understand. You're right. All right, anybody else? Uh, Jim, you want to say anything? Or Reader or?
Oh, the other thing to take up the point that we just talked about, the people in LaBarren may not know anything about it. But how do we get the word out to tell people about what we're doing? Uh, we've talked amongst ourselves, and I know there are people watching on TV. But somehow we have to get the word out so that the people in town know what is going on and how this plan is going to affect them in three to five years.
Yeah.
And that's what we, that's one of the things we got to drive at. Uh, you know, and that's important to keep it active and alive.
Because that was one of the questions that the people raised when I was speaking to them while I was signing and saying, how do I know what's going on in the town? And what, what do you people do on this planning board? They have no, no understanding of what's going on and they don't seem to have an understanding of how to find that information.
Great question. I think, I think one of the things, uh, you know, Lakeham is very strong for us. You know, they do a good job and they'll put in together any programs that we ask them to do. And so maybe we, you know, put together a few programs, you know, oh, having to do with open space and, and talk about, you know, the things in the future. And, you know, we try to do that with budgets and stuff like that. I mean, you know, unfortunately, you know, uh, we see less and less people getting involved. And, um, that's definitely a problem. There's no question about it. But at the same time, uh, we don't have any newspapers to cover us anymore. You know, we used to have the Brockton Enterprise and the Standard Times and, you know, the Middleborough Gazette is not much anymore. Uh, and that's a problem. Everybody's relying on Facebook, but, you know, as you probably know, not all, not everything on Facebook is true. And so that's, that's a problem. So, um, if we want to try to work on some type of a campaign, you know, where we can get some of this thing out there, we can do that, you know? And I'm sure Lakeham would gladly do that.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things I would Hills, do you have like a community center or a sales office? Or do you have a, an initial point of contact when someone comes in that's interested in LaBarren Hills? One, two, when you live there, is there a community or a group area that everyone has access to? Because I, I would love to come down, uh, and talk to folks and or, you know, uh, give a, you know, give a, uh, master plan to them, uh, that they can have at their fingertips and, and or for those that are computer savvy, give them a hyperlink. Uh, and, and talk a little bit about the plan. So do you have that there in LaBarren Hills?
Rodney, are you speaking to me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I know that they have a community center, but it's over at the golf course, golf course in the, in the big, the country club room. Uh, but I, I'd be more than glad to go over and speak to the people there to see if there's a a way and a venue by which, you know, we can communicate to the residents within LaBarren what's actually happening. Because I can tell you from here, I'm the, uh, the president of the homeowners association for my group of condos here, which is about 23 properties. I mean, once we get out of the, the coronavirus syndrome here and are able to meet, that would be a perfect venue to have a, you know, a get-together and then present to them, at least in my group, and then I could then, what's going on in the town, we could then take, I could then speak to the other homeowner associations, presidents, and ask them to do the same thing they do. So by then you get it spreaded that way. And I think it's a, it's a better way to do it through the homeowners association.
Right.
And I'd be more than glad to do that.
Yeah, thank you. So if you have the homeowners association, do you, do you have a, um, do you have a, uh, a webpage or someplace how you disseminate your information as a, as a homeowners association?
No, sir. What you have to do is simply, you know, I would send them, I have everybody's contact information. So I would send them an email. Now, if you want to consider me emailing these folks, you know, information regarding special projects or what's happening in the town, you know, if we want to use some kind of a newsletter like that, I'd be more, you know, be more than willing to, to work with these folks on that. Because that's the only way that these folks are going to know. Because, you know, I was going to have a get-together here at Christmas in my home for all of the homeowners, but I didn't do it because of, of COVID. So once we get, once we get vaccinated, we get past COVID, you know, it's a, it's a perfect venue to communicate and to educate the homeowners in my group, and then we could do with the other homeowners groups as to what's happening in the town and making them aware of, uh, you know, the Lakeville project or what is Lakeville Hospital project or any of those type of projects. But, uh, going through the country club, I don't see that as a real viable opportunity. They're more focused on the restaurant and the function space and the golf course and all that. And I think, uh, doing it on a smaller group basis like the homeowners association would be, would be good. And I would think some of the other uh, communities in the town that have similar homeowners association should think of doing the same thing.
All right. And our meetings like this is, uh, it, uh, they're located on, uh, Lakeham and I believe Vimeo too, right? Uh, is that correct, Rich?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to suggest too that, um, we try to say this as often as we can, but if folks go to the town's website even one time, they can sign up for information from specific committees. So if they don't, if they don't care about anything else and all they want to know about is what the master plan does, they can just sign up to get notifications on uh, master plan. But, you know, some folks, they sign up for one and then they sign up for more and they're like, oh, I saw this and I saw this. And they like having all that information. So um, you can sign up to receive, you know, meeting notifications and, um, right from the town's website. So that's a great way to get information right from what's going on right from town hall.
Appreciate that.
Leah, I think, I'm sorry, Leah, I think that, that's a perfect, uh, comment, but I think, uh, most of the people have no idea that there is a, uh, a town website that they can go to and, and get that. When you talk to these people, they basically say to me, what's going on in the town? Because they have no idea or they have, you know, whether that's their fault or not.
The only, um, I think, organization or group that we still have that mails a mailer is our senior center. And people, folks who are, you know, whatever the senior age is, I don't know if it's over 60, over 65, um, they can actually get a physical mailing. They still put that in the mail. It comes in your mailbox. That, that, some folks really like that option. They like to be able to have that piece of paper and not have to print it. And they can read it and they can find out, you know, some things. And then if they're interested, they can make a phone call from there. So that's another option for, for our, our seniors out there.
Well, I think, you know, the people in my group, I think would be very interested, very welcoming to some kind of a newsletter. And, you know, I would, uh, just suggest that we give thought to doing that. I'd be more than glad to disseminate that, you know, to my home, to my homeowners. And I can get the other homeowner presidents to do the same. I think that tend to be, I can only speak for the residents here in LaBarren, that they would be very welcome to knowing what's going on because most of them have no idea.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yes.
Um, about a year and a half, two years ago, um, the town administrator and the town coordinator were floating around an idea on how to educate people about town government and what's going on in town and what the responsibilities are for the various groups. And they had come up with, they wanted to try to put together like a an outdoor event, a booth, and having the individual departments, communities, commissions be there and people can walk around and visit the booths and get information and talk to the people manning the booths on what they did and what their goals were and, and get literature. And you know, maybe that's something that we could work with the arts council on, um, when they are able to get another arts festival going and have some booths like that. Um, have our boards, communities and commissions represented and give them educational material.
Okay.
Good idea to me, Tracy.
Um.
And we can work on that.
Okay, what do we, who we got left here? Um, Rita, you want to say anything?
I just had two comments. Uh, one was on the design, uh, bylaw for commercial buildings. I know that, um, master plan, we really felt that was important. For instance, the Walgreens building could have been built more to the, uh, New England style building. And I know zinc, um, if you remember Rodney, we thought, um, Serp had is there to help us. The other one was the open space bylaw. Three or four years ago, we, I, the technical assistance uh, and Serp had developed open space bylaw for the planning board. But the planning board didn't want to move forward with it until they had a development that was in, coming into town. And our master plan committee's argument was, well, you'll have to go to town meeting to pass it. You need to get bylaw on the books first. So.
Okay, I think that, those are very, two very good points. And I know that that's in there and I agree with you about the design part that we need to be. I think, you know, you take the, uh, like you say, the Walgreens or you take the, uh, the dollar store.
Yeah.
That, that could have been, you know, designed a lot differently than what it is. And, um, so that definitely needs to be looked at. All right, we got anybody else? Uh, Joe, you want to say anything or are you all set?
All set.
Patrick?
All set.
Jim?
All set. Thank you.
Okay, uh, did I miss anybody? Uh, Leah, you all set? Brian, you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. All right, well, um, I appreciate everybody. Uh, I thought it was a good meeting and, uh, like Brian says, we've got to keep this thing moving. And, um, I think there's a number of things that we can work together on to get done this year. So thank you very much. So Rodney, you need to, uh, uh, vote to adjourn your meeting, please.
All right, make a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Rodney, before you did that, Rodney, did Rita, do we need to just approve the minutes from that February, last February meeting?
Or do we need to hold a separate meeting to do that?
It was on the agenda?
I think it was on the agenda.
Then you can do it if you want.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Rita, you're muted in case you.
So.
Not on the agenda.
Our, yeah, our agenda is to meet with the board of selectmen.
Okay, sorry.
Just scheduled next meeting, but we can do that offline.
Yeah, and then new business, old business, and then, um, we can adjourn the meeting.
So Patrick made the motion or did Jim?
I seconded the motion. Patrick made it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Rodney?
Yes.
You need to take a roll call vote on that motion.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, you want me to go individually, Tracy, or do you want me to just?
Please.
Okay. So all in favor, was unanimous?
Rita.
Yep, so Rita Garbitz, James Rogers, Patrick Marshall.
Aye.
And, uh, do I get a vote?
Yep.
You get a vote.
Rodney Dixon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Um, the board of selectmen, um, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, enter executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 30A, section 21 three, to discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Heather Saret versus the town of Lakeville, M C A D docket 18, M N E M O 2098, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Who's in favor?
AB and I.
They are.
The camera eye.